Happy Valentine's Day. Some treats for all of you since we're putting some extra time. And I want to turn word to Phil here, who comes from ISBA. And I've sat in on some of his workshops. Does a great job. So I'm anxious to see what we can learn tonight.
Thanks for having me, Kim. I hope JD makes it soon. But this is actually part one of two pieces that will not only satisfy your literacy and continuous improvement, training requirement by the state, but hopefully do more. We really want to dig into, I've got my colleague Jason, I want to introduce him before I'm nervous and fail to. Jason Lloyd is a school board member in Twin Falls, just had a board meeting last night. Came to work for ISBA in October. And what else should they know about you?
Been in education my whole life. My mother's a teacher, my wife's a teacher, and I love education.
Weren't you a teacher also, or college professor?
Yes, yes, I was post-senior.
Yes.
Both, yeah. And so he'll engage here in the workshop too at some point. We have not rehearsed together, so don't. But we're just going to roll with it. In fact, I have no intention, I know there's a lot of slides, I'll probably click through them. But I think the most effective learning opportunity is a conversation together. And everywhere I go, there's a conversation that needs to be had by a board, board superintendent, administrative team. But it's not always being had. So a lot of times, my thinking, and as a facilitator, and I've been doing this a long time, is what do people really need to talk about? Like, what can I say, ask, suggest, do, that prompts sort of those aha's that come? And with that is this question about, you know, what is good governance anyway? What, what does it mean to govern effectively, govern and oversee a school system? I write and talk about these things a lot, but I think it means different things, different places. Any of the trustees, what does it mean to you? What, what does good governance look like, feel like? What do you do, what do you not do?
I, I think it's working together for the best of the district, working with administration, together. To come up to what we can do for the students and for our community.
Together is a key word?
Together, uh-huh. And, yeah, what we bring to the table, and how we bring that.
There's a great old book by Jamie Volmer called Schools Can't Do It Alone. Jamie Volmer was an ice cream manufacturer, had his own business, and did a lot of speaking about how messed up public schools were. And then he investigated, dug in a little bit more, gave a little more thinking, slept on it, got confronted, blah, blah, blah. Like, it's, it's quite an amazing story if you've ever had a chance to hear him speak or read his book, Schools Can't Do It Alone. One of his realizations was, you know, when he was making ice cream, you know, the big factory, if they had bad blueberries, they could call them, like, they could toss them away. And it dawned on him one day, it's like, wait a minute, in public education, we don't, we don't get to pick the bad ones out. We've got to work with what we have. It's sort of a fascinating mindset and shift. He's on my mind, had his book in my hand yesterday. But, so just thinking about that, like, what are we trying to do here anyway? And what are our limitations? And very importantly, that concept, how do we do it together? One of the essential pieces, as I talk and share, is, is how do we work trustees, administration, teachers and staff, community? Some of you that might have been in workshops with me a couple of years ago, we were talking about a book called The Governance Core. And Michael Folen, who's an education leader, researcher out of Canada, he put together a book with a guy by the name of Davis Campbell, who had, had worked in public education for more than 50 years. And so they put this book together called The Governance Core. And one of the big pieces was this idea that what, what teachers are doing in the classroom, does that make any sense with what administrators are doing, wherever they are, and whatever it is they're doing, no offense, folks. Like, is it, does it even make sense? And they use the word coherent. And when they put that book together, The Governance Core, they put it in this third circle, does what the board does, does it make any sense with what is actually happening with teachers and with admin? Like, is it disconnected? Is it fragmented? Is it, how does it fit together? And as I think about that, I think of a fourth circle that I think is really critical, and maybe the most important missing element, right, is how do we, as board members, engage the community? Not just our friends, not just people that think like us, come from our background, go to our church, whatever the, our circle is, but, but the broader community. How do we, not just the customers, so not just parents and families or students, but the elderly folks, the people that don't have children, the married, the unmarried, every walk of life in the community. How do we get them invested in what the board is doing, what the administration is doing, and what's happening in the classroom? So I'm going to ask you to indulge me in this question here. Sorry, it's green instead of the traditional yellow. I'd like you to pick a number and answer that question for us. And Jason will pick these up, so it's quasi-anonymous. I, I'm going to say, you know, usually I would say, well, have a superintendent do this, but I want the B-team superintendents here to agree on an answer. You two come to consensus on one, so that way it'll give us at least five of them.
I feel like Jeopardy, do, 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 do.
What percentage of Kuna students are currently reading at or above grade level? And then there is a follow-up question. Jason, you want to stick those on the left for me?
Yeah.
Now, here's the trickier one. I'll advance the slide. But with the right support, what percentage of students could be performing at or above grade level? So you have to interpret that, define it. Did you guys do well on the first one? Did you collaborate?
Thank you.
Thank you.
With the right support, what percentage of students could be reading, specifically reading, at or above grade level?
Give them any help.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're going to come to decision.
And they've got to agree, so that's super tricky. Sorry, that B-team term, that was one of their.
Yeah.
Just saying, I didn't just call them that.
I propose.
One of them said it for both of them. But, so with data, one of the very first questions we should always ask about any data, any information, just, what do we see? When you look up here on the left, on the right, what, what do you see there?
I see where we're at and where we need to be, or where we think we need to be.
Two different kind of ranges.
Definitely.
Okay.
Somebody guessed really low.
Somebody, is that, is that really low?
No, it's not me.
Somebody guessed low.
I assume we're at low, low, low.
Somebody else, put that in your own words. What do you see on the left versus the right?
I see that there should be improvement.
There, there should be improvement.
We're not performing where we need to be.
I'm going to say that, just to write this up here, this one's at 45%, and the top one is at 78%. And the range here is 85, that's kind of like an eight, to 95. So wherever you were at on here, you probably put something higher up there. In fact, I think there's 100% chance of that. Anything else? What, what was in your mind when you picked a number for the percentage of students that are currently reading at or above grade level? This is a great timing, because you're going to see a report on this tonight.
That it's lower than it, than it would like to be?
Was that what was in your mind? That you know it's lower than what the board would like to see?
I think anybody in the.
Anyone in the community? Anything else? Like, what was on your mind? Had, was there a report? Was there a guess? Was there?
Mine was a wild guess.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, no, no, thank you.
I know they discussed it, and so I don't, I might have picked the wrong number, but I was thinking, we've talked about this before, but.
What, what was in your mind here, this 85 to 95% range? Just.
That's where I want it to be.
What's that?
That's where I want it to be.
You want it to be.
My vision, my vision is that.
Yeah.
We can get to that.
Well, and with the right support, kind of subjective, but if we have whatever it is that it takes to move from this range, which the median here would be about 60%, to the median here, which is 90%, what, what would it take to go from 60% of students reading at or above grade level? And this was intentionally just left wide open, K-12. As we, we think about that, one of the most important things that a school board can do.
Oops, it's coming down.
Yeah, Joe.
Okay, and I got more backup magnets, so thanks to somebody.
Deanne links up everything.
Actually, it's Kevin.
Thanks, yeah.
Him too.
One of the most important things a school board can do is focus. One of the most difficult things a school board has to do is focus. There's just no end, pick your term for it, tyranny of the moment, there, there is no end of stuff coming at us. And one of the hard things, particularly when we're new, one of the hard things is to differentiate between a customer complaint and a community concern, right? Because, and I'm reflecting, when I was a new school board member, I was the people people came to. And once they knew I would listen, they told their friends, "Talk to Phil." Didn't matter whether it was parents, or whether it was staff, or just a community member. And, and it was really hard to get, it, it takes most of us about two years to get to a place, it's like, oh, that's why we shouldn't do that, like, right? It, it's, we don't know until we know. And people can tell us, but it's not the same until we experience it. We really don't understand something until we've experienced it. And then, most of us, once we get it, we get it. But that distinction between being micro-focused on what's happening in an individual classroom, dare I say, library, lunchroom, playground, ballfield, like, that, that micro-focus versus the macro-focus of the long-term vision. I would say for me as a board member, that didn't sink in until the night that I was signing a contract that gave an easement to a utility company to go through one of our middle school's property, and the words were "into perpetuity." I don't think I'd ever signed anything before that with those words in it. Like, I was, I was, I was the board chair, signing what the board had approved to give away property where we could never have a ballfield, never build another building, never put a parking lot, never put in a fire lane, you know, like, that, that was no longer, and those words "into perpetuity" were pretty, pretty daunting. I, I think it was that night that, for me, I realized, oh, this is really big picture, like, right? It was, we'd have all the other kinds of stuff of the school year, and the things that come and go, and conflicts, and challenges, and budgets, and bonds, and all the, all the killer bees, the buses, ballgames, buildings, everything that you have to do, you know, that, that is not helping focus on this. It's not like buildings, and buses, and bonds, and all the things are not important, they're just not the main thing. And so I, I would encourage you tonight, just to kind of reflect on, well, what is our main thing? And maybe that's a rhetorical individual question, and maybe it's a conversation as a board in the near future. Like, for us as the Kuna School Board, what is the main thing that we can agree to is, is our big one? And we've been rolling out something slowly across the state of Idaho, we call Gem State Governance. It comes from the research on how school boards can affect student achievement, and it's really primarily focused in three areas. What, what are the beliefs about, about what is possible? Does a person have kind of a growth mindset, where they have high expectations for kids, for, for staff, for themselves? There's a lot that goes into perspectives. Do we have the knowledge, the understanding, the wisdom, I would even add sometimes, to do the actions that we can statistically correlate with improving student achievement? Nobody credible can say, if the board does this, this, and this, student achievement will improve. What we can say is where student achievement is improving, boards tend to do this, this, and this. Let's, let's unpack some of that a little bit. I apologize, the slides, like, they went from PowerPoint to PDF to Google Slides to Squirtle. We talked about what is governance. I think, just whatever it's worth, I think one of the essential pieces of governance, and perhaps the biggest power we have as a trustee, is the power of the question. And I think, for what, again, whatever that, whatever Phil's thinking is worth, I, I, I think that the better the questions we ask, the better the school board governs. So what does that look like? What, well, for one, it, it's asking informed questions. Because if we're going to get to the balance between being too micro-focused and maybe not being micro-focused enough, that balance is somewhere in the words of informed oversight. We know enough to ask the good questions, right? So I think good governance is asking good questions, informed questions, informed oversight. One of the things we know from the research, and there was a, a project, started in 1998, it ended about 2015. Idaho was a part of it. In fact, a board chair that was in Boise at the time, she's since deceased, but her name is Janet. She was a librarian in Boise, and she was a part of this national research study, as were several people from Idaho at the time. One of the things that we found was, there's no substitute for high expectations. Like, interviewing boards where students were improving in achievement, the board and the system had high expectations for kids. You, you just can't emphasize how important that is. Like, the piece here that the board can have is to have high expectations, which translate into a powerful vision with high goals and high expectations for students and staff. Like, that's, that's probably the key perspective that it takes to move the needle. But we know from ongoing research as well, in fact, Brian brought in this book, I think he wanted me to sign it. Actually, he, he told me he bought it and didn't have any idea it had a connection with me, but. Chapter four in the book, these two guys that wrote chapter four, they did a very quantitative study in the state of Montana in 2013. It was built on the foundations of the Lighthouse Project. And they did a statewide study that correlated what boards said they did with how they were doing on state standardized tests. And the strongest correlations they had was, number one, goals for the superintendent related to improving student achievement. It was off the charts, like, the Pearson R-value, .71, highly statistically significant. If a board has goals for the superintendent that relate to improved student achievement, achievement almost always is improved. Very statistically significant. The second most statistically significant was communicating those expectations to the community. Having goals for the superintendent that are on the website, that are on school newsletters, that are talked about in board meetings. Part of this is the power of alignment, or this same idea here, coherence. What we say is important, and what we're wanting to do, is that what we as a board are holding the system accountable for? Look at this one, the third most statistically significant was making contract decisions about the superintendent based on how the students are doing. Having that be a big part of the basis, which in Idaho, it's required by law, but I don't, it, the law just says you have to consider it, whatever that means. Like, you have to consider student achievement when you evaluate a superintendent. The board has to decide with a superintendent, this is what this means to us in Kuna. This is how this alignment, this improvement effort goes. But collaborating with staff and community, staff is an essential part of the community, on a plan for the district, whether you call it a strategic plan, or you call it something else, boards and systems that are improving in achievement, they have a plan. You just see how that all fits together, so that the board's work is also tied into the plan. In higher achieving districts, and I mean districts that are actually improving in achievement, right, that's, that's the secret. It's not where did you start, but what are you doing with what you have? The, the board is aligning its work to the same goals they're holding the system and the superintendent accountable for. This, this is all flowing in the same direction, and they're monitoring progress. The simple act of monitoring progress on student achievement is likely to drive improvement in achievement. When the whole system knows the board is paying attention to how the students are doing, and they're going to be talking at their February board meeting on the latest IRI data, everybody wants to look good. Not just the superintendents, not just the central office staff, principals, teachers, everybody wants to look good. Just the act of monitoring achievement, I believe, it can be a powerful lever for improving achievement. Indulge me just a minute. Four pictures together. I don't know, did you see these in the packet already, or these? What, what's the theme in those four photos? To you. What is it?
Family.
Family, thank you.
Achievement.
Yeah, just go ahead and name them all, all right?
Go for it. Here's D, you're on a roll now, girl.
I'll waste the whiteboard instead of the paper there. Family, achievement, I can almost read that. Somebody else? What do you see, Hillary?
Um, trust.
Trust. Huge, right? Kim?
I, I, I'm going to go with achievement. I, I'm trying to think, because you're achieving all of those things. You're exploring, you're trying new things, maybe.
I like exploring.
Yeah.
Discovery.
Discovery, sorry. That's kind of close to the exploring, yeah.
What if that was a little boy in the picture with a magnifying glass? What would you say?
He's trying to start a fire.
Burning bugs, burning bugs, yeah. Michael knows.
What, what did you say, Michael?
Burning bugs.
I was going to say, he's trying to start a fire.
Yeah. Nah, boys, boys know, it's burning bugs.
Investigating.
Investigating. Yeah, it's this exploring, discovery. I, I love the word curiosity. I, I won't spend a lot of time, but now that that's a little larger, do you see anything different happening, or?
Trust.
We got trust, we got family.
They're laughing, they're playing, they're together.
Laughing, together. One of the most important signs of a healthy group is laughter. It doesn't matter what the group is. Like, if the board can laugh with each other, at each other, with the board as a whole, it's healthy, right? Anything else?
I'm writing that down. Laughter together is healthy.
I learned that in church work. One of the biggest factors of a healthy church is their laughter. Anything else on that one?
Enjoyment.
Enjoyment. I write sloppy enough, but at least I can hold the pen right. We got that one. This is a really intriguing picture. There's a lot going on there. What do you, what do you see a little bit more enlarged?
Kind of look at it like the big picture going forward.
Yeah, there's a big picture going forward.
Picture behind you, but you're focused on.
That's good.
Picture.
Focused on the road ahead.
What's that?
Focusing on the road ahead.
Focusing on the road ahead?
Sometimes driving is relaxing. Sometimes driving is relaxing.
It's red line, they're right at it.
I'm thinking speeding.
Yeah, there's some speeding.
I'm thinking there should be a policeman or a group there or somewhere.
Take a good look at the rearview mirror.
The road behind.
Yeah.
Seems clear than the road ahead.
The rearview mirror is a lot clearer, almost like totally clear compared to the fuzzy future. I heard a guy speak at a school boards conference 20 years ago in Spokane. The coach for Remember the Titans, not Denzel Washington for the women, but the real one, Coach Boone, he was the first person I ever heard say these words. "We need to stop trying to prepare students for our past and prepare them for their future." It's been kind of haunting as a father. My kids are all grown. The youngest one lives here in the area, went to Boise State, has a degree in computer science. He does work I didn't even know existed when he was born. And gets paid a whole lot more money than I do. And even if he loses his job, he still makes more money. Like, he makes extra money when he loses a job. I'm serious, is it all get up? Like, it's the most foreign thing to me, the tech industry, how it works. All three of my kids do things that I would have never imagined them doing as adults. Those words have been kind of constantly resounding with me. How do we not try to prepare kids for our past, which is kind of clear to us? We, you know, we needed cursive writing, I hope I'm not stepping on anything here. My 88-year-old mother is just convinced that the death of public schools is not teaching more cursive writing. I said, "Mom, if they apply for a job, if they want to go to college, if they want to learn how to fix something, do something, be a mechanic, they do that on a computer." There's other advantages to handwriting. Achievement. I like the idea in this photo, possibilities. And I just reinforce that other idea that their possibilities, their future, their vision, not necessarily what we would have thought. All of these things can be correlated and are in research with school systems that are improving in achievement. There's clear vision. And vision's important, but clear vision is probably more important. That, and I said it earlier, but it has to be a shared vision with the community. It's not sustainable for five trustees to sit in a room and come up with a vision for the district. So it's a nice exercise, good conversation, but the reality is if the community's not involved, not bought in, not participating, students, staff, parents, families, other community members, it just doesn't get sustained. Specific goal setting, that's a little different. Goals are important, but fuzzy goals get fuzzy results. The more specific the goal, the more likely achievement is to be improving. And for a school board, this is sometimes counterintuitive. In fact, if we had a room full of teachers, we would have all different ideas, no offense, Kim. We'd have all different ideas about what the main goals should be, right? Because the art teacher thinks it should be art, and the science teacher thinks it should be science, and the math teacher thinks it should be math, but they can't all be right. I was working with the Austin School District 10 years ago on a superintendent evaluation instrument, and we were just moving right along, we'd had two, three workshops, everything was making progress. And the system came up with this scorecard that they wanted to use as the foundation for the superintendent evaluation instrument. It had 65 different things to measure. I said, "Folks, if you're measuring 65 things, y'all aren't measuring anything." Like, if the goal is 65 different goals, there is no goal. All to say the important piece of that is the power of a narrow focus. What we want to see is highly performing school boards with highly performing instructional teams, administrators and teachers. The teachers can't do it alone, administrators can't do it alone, the board can't do it alone. It's everybody doing their piece to work together toward the same objective. And a piece of this that may be inherently here is, in order for there to be improvement, the system has to be learning. The board has to be learning and boardsmanship improving. Haven't seen a gender-inclusive word for boardsmanship yet. Boardspersonship, anyway, sorry. The instructional team has to be improving. If we do what we've always done, we're going to get less than we always have. We hear it said that if we do what we've always done, we'll get what we've always had, but that's really not true. If we do the same thing over and over and over and over time, whether it's a machine or a person or a system, we actually get less out of it. So somebody has to be able to step out and have the curiosity, the discovery, that idea of exploring to be able to develop new techniques. There's a lot of different things. Did I prompt any questions?
I'm fine.
Jason, you want to jump in and add anything to what I've been saying here? You don't have to, I mean, it's...
No, I wanted to, but you brought a roll. I wanted to just reiterate the belief in your students and your systems, high expectations, the belief they can perform. It reminds me of one of my favorite academic studies done in the 70s, if you've heard of the Pygmalion Effect, where they researched, I don't know how they got away with this, but they did at the time, researchers gave kindergarten teachers, 20 students, they said, "Here are the 10 gifted students and here are the 10 non-gifted students." And then they let them teach the kids throughout the year, and then they went back, and sure enough, the 10 gifted students did well and the 10 non-gifted students struggled. But the key was, they had randomized the students. So there was no difference between those two groups. But it was the effect of belief that is really powerful.
It was their expectation.
Yeah.
Hillary, usually Hillary asks questions, I'm just wondering if you have any questions for?
I will let you know, but no, I don't, thank you.
Alright, so I like to draw a pyramid or a triangle. And just to illustrate, there's, it's a system with different roles. There's the, often we would call it the 50,000-foot level, right? That's the strategic. There's the 10,000-foot level, we call that the tactical. I'll get an award for this picture, I can tell already. And then there's the ground level. And the ground level is where the easel falls over. I should have just said it quite clearly. That was not on purpose for your man. The strategic, the tactical, and then the operations. These are your teachers and staff, these are the people that are day in and day out, hands-on with kids, right? These are the supervisors, these are the administrators, the people that are determining how things are done, and the board needs to be determining what is done. That's strategic. Strategic is your why, why you do what you do, your vision, and your mission. And the work of goals overlaps between the board and the administration. And then the administration comes up with objectives. Operations has activities they do and individual tasks. And all this somehow needs to make sense, top to bottom. At the bottom is the outcomes. This is the result of all the work that needs to happen. A very important problem exists when board members try to do the work of administrators and teachers and staff. What's the biggest problem with that, in your thinking? If board members are trying to prescribe how administrators manage, how teachers teach, how staff does their day-to-day job, what's the big problem with that?
For me, they're micromanaging something that they really don't have, they know about as much as they should. You know, they're micromanaging things that they don't understand.
I've worked with boards all over the country, and last night I was with a district with 180-some kids. I've worked with Clark County board members in Vegas with 330-some thousand, and Houston with 220-some thousand. And it's always the same. It's not, it's not different, little district, medium-sized district, large district. Good governance is good governance. I spent hours with the Houston School Board, nine caring women on the board, passionate. They were trying to figure out what they could possibly do to improve the academic performance of one of their school feeder patterns. Eight out of nine people said either they could tutor students on Saturdays, or they could coach math teachers, or they could volunteer in classrooms. There is nothing wrong with a board member tutoring kids on Saturdays, or volunteering in classrooms, or being a math coach, if that's your expertise, right? There's nothing wrong with that as a volunteer, but the problem is, who's doing the board's job if the board doesn't do the board's job? That board got taken over by the state. Because there's business up here at the top in the strategic end that the board has to mind, the vision, the mission, and very, very vitally holding the system accountable for results. Only the board can hold the district accountable for results. Now, you serve on a dual grant of authority. You're elected by the citizens of the school district, and you exist as a board and district because the state says you do. We don't really like that as board members, we love the concept of local control. I wrote a master's thesis on it a long time ago, I know how important local control is. Well, the reality is, and I said this to Senator Lent three weeks ago in his office, the reality is, boards get all the local control that the legislature gives to them.
Yeah, that's true.
Right? And what the question becomes for us, we can kick against the wall or the ice outside or whatever about that, we can scream and holler as people do every day over at the Capitol. Every now and then I do. But it's like, the reality is, we work with what we get within the parameters, and then the question becomes, what are we doing with what we were given? If the board doesn't do its job, again, the administration's not going to do it. They're not going to go out to the community and set a collaboratively developed vision for student success. The administration's not going to really hold the whole system accountable. You're the elected representatives of the community, only you have the authority to hold the district accountable. So as you think about that, I don't mean this to be too heavy, I'm just trying to go fast, right? Like, how does the board do this work? And if there's plenty of time left over, volunteer to do some other stuff? Like, right? But, I mean, I was on a school board, I was a parent, I was a pastor in the school district, I had all kinds of conflicts and role confusion, and you know, which hat am I putting on now? Is it, is it an advocate? Is it a representative of this group? Am I here on behalf of my kid? Am I here on behalf of the school board? Like, it was confusing for me, much less for the teachers. But how do we navigate that and make sure we do the big stuff? What Stephen Covey would call the big rocks, right? How do we make sure we have that rock of vision and the big rock of accountability in place with community connection? If there is a secret sauce that's missing in public school systems with improving achievement, it is that community connection. And I had those same guys that did the research study 12 years ago in Montana do a report for me in Texas just a few years ago. They showed a strong relationship between the boards involving the community in the board's work, not sitting in a room like this and developing a vision and goals and plan, you know, policies and all the work of the board, but actually bringing the community in to help the board with that work. Making sure that all voices were heard and included. The greater extent to which boards do that, the more likely the district is improving in achievement overall and closing gaps at the same time. It really is sort of that elusive magical element that's been missing. When we talk about community engagement, it can't just be parents and teachers in classrooms. It can't just be back-to-school night, it can't just be chaperones and field trips. That's all good, but that's down here at the operations level. We need to figure out how do we involve the community in our work as a board? And I would encourage you to think about that as you think about how do we improve reading, right? It's Kevin, right? Yeah, he let me know, he taught only the upper grades of elementary school. Something about not having the skills to teach kids to read, but helping them read to learn, that transition that we know happens about third grade. You might ask your administration for the data on student math sometime. Particularly, look at Hispanic students, English language learners. Look at their math scores in second grade and look at them in fifth grade. I'd almost be certain, I should have looked before I said this, but I'd almost be certain that those kiddos are doing pretty well in second grade on math. And they're grossly underperforming in fifth grade. Why is that? They're not reading and understanding the English words fast enough to do the word problems to get it worked out, and they're frustrated. And almost everywhere I've seen in the country, those trends are the same. The Hispanic students come in doing great at math, but they don't quite master the English language skills to comprehend math quickly enough with understanding to do word problems in fifth grade. Talk with your educators, talk with others, verify that what I'm saying is true or ridiculous. But look at that data. How is that group of students doing in math in the lower grades? Kevin's going to pull it up. And then how are they doing in the upper elementary school? Because then it becomes all about reading, right? Math is all about reading. I'm going to suggest to you that the state, Governor Little, like whatever anybody thinks of other initiatives, things happening in the state, or the governor, or the superintendent of public instruction, they're on the right track with how do we improve reading comprehension in the early grades? That's the key to every single thing else in life. Whether you're a businessperson, whether you're a college professor, whether you're a car mechanic or a plumber, being able to read with understanding may be the ticket for success. Or at least the best, most important ticket we have, being able to read with understanding. So the laws exist, we have to have this in continuous improvement plan. Do y'all know anything about yours? Do you look at it? Do you think about it? You have to adopt one about every October-ish?
It's tighter strategic.
You've got the goals aligned consistently?
Strategic plans, yeah.
In most school systems in Idaho, it's just a rote thing. Somebody fills it out, board says yes, approves it, it's done. Like, how might that be used in a way that actually gets what Kim's talking about embedded in the goals for the superintendent and then the system? There are these specific requirements in the strategic plan, I'm sure that yours, like everybody else's, has checked all boxes. What I don't know is if it's helping anything, right? Or it's just sort of a thing that has to be done, is it active? Is it alive? Do your board meeting agendas relate to anything in the continuous improvement plan? Do your goals for the superintendent relate to what's in the continuous improvement plan? You'll notice I'm talking about the same things over and over. I'm talking about alignment, coherence, right? Is there a plan and is it focused? If we're going to improve reading in the state of Idaho, it will be because school systems focused on improving reading. And I would even suggest, as I do everywhere I go, reading is this big, complex thing. Reading is not simple. Most of those slides are for part two. But reading is not simple. You can read fast, you can read slow, you can read fluently, you can read with expression. But I believe the most important piece is, can we read and comprehend? Did we understand what we read so that we can put it into our own words or apply it in whatever way that we need to? The pieces that have to be in the continuous improvement- The pieces that have to be in the continuous improvement plan. The idea was accountability, the reality is, it's just, it's a lot of extra stuff. And the board would have to be maybe more committed and maybe less words. Like, maybe more like granular to, we're going to zero in on improving third grades. Seems to be sort of that magic grade where kids are learning to read and then reading to learn. And if they're not, then the system is paying to remediate them, or struggling to remediate them, or passing them on without remediating them. I've seen it in like internet forwards and before we even use the word fake news, fake news stuff, you know? It was reported in certain circles that the state of Florida was building prisons based on children's undiagnosed or un... What am I trying to say? Unfixed eyesight problems. It's the wrong word, I think you know what I mean. Uncorrected eyesight, like, right? That they could, they knew if a child couldn't see well to read well, that, now it's not true, but it was an interesting thing, it really got a lot of traction twenty years ago or so. This idea that Florida was building prisons in their state. In fact, if you Google it, I think you can still find it as not true. But, that idea that you could predict who's going to go to prison by who can see to read or not. I still think there's something really powerful in that. Like, and I'm somebody that had really bad eyesight as a little kid that wasn't diagnosed by the optometrist. This is the first grade teacher, and then the school nurse that said you need to get him to an ophthalmologist. And I had the lazy eye with the patch, the whole bit, but it was because the teacher saw that, I don't think he can see well, you know, squinting at the board or whatever it was at six years old, I don't know. But I think about that sometimes, like where would my life be today if I hadn't have had my eyes corrected, vision corrected, glasses, contacts, surgery? Like, what would I be doing today? If I couldn't have read and learned to read and write and do math and every other thing? Like, it is the gateway, like, right? Yes, science is important, music's important, art's important, social science is important, it's all important. But if we can't read well, we're not going to succeed in those other academic pursuits or anything else we try to do in life. The idea is accountability though. And so here the state's requiring that you have a session like this at some point where you learn and talk about literacy intervention and improvements. Here's what I want to say before we head toward part two. You don't need to be reading specialist to be an amazing board member. In fact, most of your administrators don't need to be reading specialists. A few people in the system need to be reading specialists. What we've learned and know from the research, board members need to know enough, in this case about the science of reading, to be able to understand what administrators come and they bring a recommendation, whether it's for curriculum, new books, professional development, whether it's budget that might be assigned to instructional coaches to improve reading, or it's something specific that they've diagnosed and that the kids need phonics or sight recognition, all the different components of what it takes to read. Like, when the administrators are talking with the board, board members, we need to know enough to be able to support good recommendations and to ask good questions. There are three fundamental questions, maybe four by the time I get down to three, but there are three fundamental questions we should ask every single time the administration makes a recommendation. Number one, what does the research say? Research might be data, what does our data suggest or what does the research say? If they were proposing a new curriculum, what does the research suggest? What are our peers doing? What are other districts around us or districts like us across Idaho? What are they doing with that particular curriculum? The third one is, yeah, there is going to be four. The third one is, how does that apply to our setting? What do we need to do in CUNA to make it successful here, right? Just because it's working well in Melba or Meridian, we're CUNA. So what do we need to do? Maybe you could quote me on this, but maybe not. What do we need to do to CUNA-ize it? Like, what, how do our teachers, our administrators, our school system? Really, what does the research say about this suggestion? What are our peers doing and how do we need to adjust it to fit CUNA? The fourth one is really probably the most powerful. How will we know if it's successful? I would suggest every single recommendation that comes from administration. What does the data show us? What are others doing with this? How do we need to modify it to work well in CUNA? And how will we know if it's successful? That's the board taking responsibility for the outcomes, the accountability. So, in the state, literacy, literacy is a big, broad term. Literacy includes all the things about reading, it also includes things about writing. Generally, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody in the room, I think it also includes things about speech, about communication. Literacy is big, it's very big. Even reading by itself, like I say, is very big. So what is it about reading? If you can't pay attention to twelve different things, what about reading might the board want to make sure they pay specific attention to to know that the system is improving? What will that look like? And that's questions, ongoing conversations. A lot of different resources that are available, again, they didn't come through here, but I'm going to send Vienna just another version in case people want like the URLs to websites that were hyperlinked here. We think about literacy, what is literacy, we've talked about that a little bit. Textbook definition, it's the ability to identify, understand, interpret, create, compute, and communicate using visual, audible, and digital materials across disciplines and in any context. The whole committee got their favorite word in mouth. Literacy, it's huge. Reading itself, it's a process of at the same time extracting and constructing meaning through interaction and involvement with written language. And there's a reference for that that I'll get you. The science of reading is a term that we've heard, what, the last five, six years especially? In Idaho especially, like the last three years, it's really become... The last three in Idaho has been a lot about the science of reading. There is literally new science about how kids read, how they learn to read, how they decode in their mind what the symbols mean to form not only words but ideas and concepts and string it together to be able to communicate, whether it's digitally, audibly, visually, across different types of academic disciplines or situations. To be able to apply what they read, right? That science of reading is relatively new. I started to hear about it nationally maybe as far back as about eight years ago, but it's really continued to gain some steam and support as people realize there are specific components like sight recognition of words, like phonics, like the fluency of being able to move across the words and the speed then with which you can move across the words that all contribute to whether a student can read well or not. Questions, comments, questions that Kevin can answer? I'd love any of those. There's essential components of reading instruction, and I've been talking around some of these vocabulary, comprehension. We could definitely put spelling in the mix, right? The ability to spell words, there's a connection there with the ability to read and understand the words, like it or not. Phonemic awareness, do we hear it? When we hear it, are we able to recognize it? A lot of times we think of that more like preschool, kindergarten, first grade, that recognition of sounds. Do the sounds then connect between what we hear and what the words actually represent? Can we do this quickly with expression, with inflection, and with comprehension? I think comprehension's, again, the big one. Do the kids have an ability to understand and gain meaning from the text? Does it mean anything to them, or is it just words? So you think about that, there is this Idaho comprehensive literacy plan. I have big hope that Idaho might ratchet this up as a bigger initiative. And we call it Idaho Reads, and we get all in on it as a statewide community instead of just around the edges. Like, but that the state sort of gets all in on reading and reading for understanding so that we can comprehend, we can grow, we can develop, we can improve economically and civically as a state through reading, students and adults. Your system needs to be able to do interventions. Part of the requirement again with the state with this training is that board members have some understanding that it's just not all that simple. Like, we can't do what we've always done and expect anything to improve. We've got to have to do something different. That may be instructional coaches, it may be professional development for staff, it may be a different curriculum. I don't begin to pretend to know what CUNA needs, like, what would improve, whatever the right number is, and Kevin's going to give you that here in lesson now probably, whatever would improve from where your students are to where you really believe they could be? What will move the needle on that may be different in CUNA than it would be anywhere else? Or even in the charter schools within CUNA, like, right? It could vary. Students that don't score proficient on the fall IRI, it's important for board members to know, they must receive, this is law, this is not an option, they must receive thirty to sixty hours of literacy intervention. We call this tier three or tier two?
Tier, well, both, tier two and three can count towards it.
Here's the pieces where it gets triggered, right? Well, this is the number, percentage of students, but thirty to sixty hours, tier two or tier three? So tier one is the students that are...
Everyone gets that same instruction.
Everybody gets a tier one instruction. And if they're falling slightly below, then they get, this is about eighteen to twenty percent of students, they get some supplemental instruction, they just get more of what we were doing in tier one. Is that accurate? They're just getting more, provide students with more frequent...
And that's what we call our wind tunnel that we talked about.
Perfect, glad you're here. And tier three, these are the ones that are really struggling.
Yes, and there's skill gaps there where we target specific skills that they don't have yet.
This is where you have to do like a pullout or something specific, right? Or within the classroom perhaps, but this is the kids that they need a lot of extra help. Like you said, skill gaps. If they're in second grade, there were things in first grade and kindergarten that they just missed. Or if they came to kindergarten and they're at this level, they're just not coming equipped to be successful in kindergarten. This costs you some money, but money is allotted, right? To help with this, we've got lots of money.
We do?
But these are requirements, that the kids with the skill gaps are getting specific, targeted to their individualized needs. The tier two, they're just getting more, more time on task, if you will. And you might even think and talk as a system at some point, what else would you need to do to move these kids up to tier one? A variety of effective...
We're probably going to have to stop there, Phil.
Good, I see it.
Because we need to get going. But I just want to make sure, I have one question for you that I hope I'm getting out of this. That good governance to all of these interventions and the reading and where we want to be is knowing the why, our why as a board. And helping our district achieve these goals and working together. Is that kind of what you're saying when you have that over there?
There's a lot, I tried to put three hours into one.
You did, yeah, I'm just trying to sum up kind of what I got out of it. And then I love the questions that you gave us to ask our administrators.
Yeah, I think with the way they recommend it...
I think those are really good questions that we can take a look as we go through our evaluations of our superintendent and just questions when we have to ask about different programs. So that's kind of what I got out of it today. And I don't know if anybody else has anything before we move on to executive board or questions that you have for Phil. I'm excited to see part two, to see maybe where more that we can do in helping our school district bring up these scores and working together with good governance. So, does anybody else have anything?
I guess I'm just curious to see what the data is now.
Yeah, and it's so fortuitous that you're going to see it in just a few minutes, I mean, that's really cool. Yeah, I would love to be a resource if, you know, I live about seven or eight miles from right here, so I know where most of the coffee shops are, and if you don't drink coffee, you can meet somewhere else. But anyway, I can be of assistance to you in the future, please let me know.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you very much. And with that, do I have a motion to go into executive session? Thank you, Phil.
I can make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Idaho Code Section 74206, supporting the elect to hold an executive session to consider evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or hearing complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent or public school student.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Kelly? An aye for me. For those of you that came, thank you, and we will be right back.
On executive session, and could I get you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, I love United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just have to say, I'm so happy the Eagles fly yesterday. Okay. Why don't you say the Pledge of Allegiance, sometimes I go, you know, whatever team. It's like, yay Eagles, I'm sorry, fly Eagles fly, that was my thing yesterday. Or I guess two days ago, all right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion that we approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JB?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm aye also. All right, we're gonna start with some celebrations. We just had a nice in-service, I'll call it in-service, this education part. Ready to tell us about our benchmark data, see if we were even close to that.
How does pressure now?
Yeah.
No. Tonight, I'm gonna share with you our winter benchmark data comparison from beginning of the year until now. But I'm only gonna show you elementary tonight, and then in March, I'll come back and bring you the secondary data. With the exception of middle school, some of the middle school math, because they use IREDI as well. Partly because it would've been super long, it's already gonna feel long, because there's a lot of slides, but I promise I won't talk about every slide. But also so that we could then dive in a little bit deeper if you want, so. And by the way, I did look up, we were seventy-four percent K5 in our reading proficiency at the end level last year, it made.
That's what I guessed.
Very good.
I said seventy-two, I was off by two.
The data I'm gonna show you tonight is winter benchmark data, so it won't be quite that level yet. So this, this gives you as a district where we were at in the beginning of the year in September. The green represents our tier one, then yellow is tier two, red is tier three. So that tier one are the students who, at the beginning of the year, were already at grade level. In kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade. Yellow are those that are, that are below grade level, but red is two or more years below grade level. Kindergarten's a little bit tricky though, because there's not really two years below in kindergarten, right? So this is where we're at, beginning of the year, anywhere from fifty to sixty-two percent in the proficient range. Here's where we were at in January. So we've jumped from anywhere between sixty-three and seventy-three percent proficient. But to give you a better idea, just kind of done some simple calculations for you. What you hope to see with this kind of data is that tier one, that green, you always want your biggest increases here. Because that means you, these are the percentage of kids that we've moved to grade level proficiency. Tier three, which is that lowest level, you always wanna see a decrease there, because that means there's fewer kids that are two or more below grade level. The tier two in the middle is always a little bit hard to read, because you have movement. Like, if you move a student out of that tier three group into tier two, that should be celebrated. But if you move, it's even better to move them from here up to here, so. Tier two, you'll oftentimes see a decrease, but sometimes you see an increase. And it's hard to know what's good and bad in tier two, because there's movement.
Both ways.
Both ways. But overall, you can see, from the beginning of the year till now, secondary did not have a huge increase in their proficiency. Most of the other grades had pretty good growth in that time period. Any questions to this point on that? Okay, so I'm gonna show you now by building level.
I was gonna ask a question, so are those second graders, did they have a slow increase in first grade, so we don't know?
I.
I mean, is this something that happens to?
Yeah, that would be, that's one of those great questions we would ask at a building level, like, hey, let's look at your data and what did happen, let's go back to the previous year.
Yeah.
It's, it is really good, but that's the kind of question he was talking about earlier tonight, that's a great question to ask us.
So, but we don't have any answer?
I don't know, well, I could get you the answer.
So like in fourth grade, the decrease in tier three is five percent, but then the tier two is increased by seven percent?
Yes, this is what I was talking about.
So that means like two percent, meaning dropped from one to two?
Yeah, some of the tier one may have dropped down, but then these five percent moved up.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking, it's kind of hard to tell if it's good or bad. I mean, obviously, a decrease is usually a good sign, unless that decrease meant they went this way. So, big picture data is what we're looking at. Teachers, they'll look at this student by student. They'll, if there's a student that walked from tier two to tier three, that will be a huge red flag to that teacher, okay, what happened with this kid, let's go find out. Let's look at our tier two, our tier three interventions, what's going on with that kid. Okay, so now it's by school. So again, this was back in September. And this is the state average, our district average, and then these are the school averages in September. And then compare that to, here we are in January, everyone is close to that sixty percent or higher range. Couple that are below it. And then I did the same thing for you, so you don't have to do math in your head. Here's that increase in our tier one, which you wanna see as much increase as possible here. A decrease in all of our tier three, and then you see one that increased here. Kind of that mix in the middle again.
Can you send us these slides?
What's that?
These weren't linked, I don't think they're, can you send these to us?
They weren't linked, yes, I will.
Yeah. And there's, there's a lot of slides in here, and I've almost spent a lot of time on them, but I wanted you to have them, because, yeah, you can go that way.
So are they all using iStation reading, is that?
Yes, this data all comes from iStation.
And do they all, are they all using the same programs, or are it's different schools using different things to make that increase?
You're stealing my thunder.
I'm sorry.
No, just kidding. Yes, all the schools, we currently have National Geographics Reach for Reading.
Okay.
Is our curriculum, but we've also had to supplement, as was talked about earlier, science of reading, the way we look at it now, has evolved over the last few years. And when we, Nat Geo was 2017, when it was published, the version that we're using, the science of reading wasn't quite there. So for example, Hegarty is a product that all of our elementaries, at least in K2, K through two, are using to help fill some of those holes in phonics that aren't as strong in National Geographic's resources. So yes, we use the same things, but we've also had to supplement.
Okay.
This is an interesting report that iStation has started providing for us. I think they took it from Curriculum Associates, the general idea. But rate of improvement, they've given different levels of it, so a high, and mid, moderate, and low. Moderate is what you would expect to see, so like in IREDI, I'll show you in just a minute, we talked about typical growth. I think moderate is a pretty similar comparison to that, it's what you would expect to see in a year. High growth, high rate of improvement, would be more like that stretch growth than IREDI calls it. So a high level of rate of improvement means that they're gonna, more than one year's worth of growth in that year. So our tier one, remember, these are our kids that are at grade level, so we've got the expected growth you would want to see. This is all overall, right? And that tier three group, we got that expected growth. This is kind of good news. That tier two group, which is just slightly below grade level, we've got high growth there. If we're able to maintain that, we would extend back at the end of the year, then we would have much higher proficiency overall. But that kind of gives you an idea of where we're at.
Sorry, is it, what's the rate based on, like, what's the average based on, like nationally, by state?
Uh, this is, this is their norm, this is norm nationally for them, this is where they get it from. So the moderate is that increase of two and eight, I think it's scale points, not percentage, no, percentile. Yeah, but it is norm, nationally normed for that. So basically, what this is telling us is that we've got, we've got good growth within the year, right? But I remember last time we talked about this data, I, you asked for some historical data. And I'm also preparing for a curriculum adoption process for K5, because our National Geographic is old and outdated, and it's time to renew. So what I did on this one, it's a little bit confusing, but I'll show you kind of the trend. Tier one was all the on-grade level, tier two was slightly below, and tier three was two or more below. And this is by grade level, and it's three years' worth of where we were at. This is all winter benchmark data, so this wasn't end of the year, this is winter. But what this shows me is that we're kind, we're, we're either trending down a little bit, or up a little bit, or flat. We're not really seeing much movement anywhere, down a little bit, up a little bit, mixed, down a little bit. So over the last three years, from beginning to the end of the year, we're making good growth. But year over year, our system hasn't improved in terms of getting more people at a higher level by the end of the year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so just so I make sure I understand, like, blue in 2023 would be the same students as red in the next year? Am I right, like?
It's not a cohort model.
Kindergarteners are.
These are different kindergarteners.
Red.
But she's saying the blue goes to red in first grade, or be the second, so they.
Oh, yes, this would be, yeah, kinder, then that would be first, that would be second.
Okay.
Yeah, good, yes. But so what this tells me is, even though we're getting good growth, we're not moving the needle on overall improvement as a system. And so I'm excited then to have the opportunity to do a curriculum process, because as was pointed out, the science of reading has come a long way in the last few years, and so even our curriculum partners out there in the world, they've all adjusted their curriculum to include better science of reading strategies within. So we'll be going through that process, and it also forces every, it forces us to look at our instructional practices too, because when you bring in a new curriculum resource, you have to adjust your practices. So I think this data shows that it is a good time to look at that. And whatever we bring in, we need to make sure that our practices lead to moving the system upward, not just kids within the same year.
Are we looking at other districts?
Yes.
And what they're using also, and how they've improved, and not, and I agree with what was said prior to this, that we have to make it our own in our way, but.
We do.
Really makes sense to look at some of those districts that it made huge.
Oh, yes. I, I have, yes, I'm talking with several of them. We're getting our, we're getting a working group ready right now, that will start to start collecting some of that information and bringing in the information. And then we'll come to you to get an actual adoption committee in place, so that we make sure that we have our fifty percent parent representation, all that on the, on the adoption committee itself, so that we can move forward and determine what's next, so.
Would it be good to have a board member on that, adoption committee?
Yeah, I'd love to have one of you.
Think about it.
Whoever wants to learn the most about science of reading. It won't be me teaching it, though. I understand it, but to teach it and articulate it well, that's why we have a reading specialist and instructional coaches, so.
I just have another question.
Yes.
Just like, like four out of the five, or five out of the six kind of graphs there, in 2025, the tier one is lower on all but fourth grade? Do you feel like, you know, any?
I think we're just stagnant. I think we're stagnant. You know, there's been a lot of, this is all post-COVID too, so you would think that that would, you know, things would improve. But there's also, I don't know, there's a lot of factors, I don't wanna make it sound like we're just making excuses. But regardless, we've, we're stagnant, right?
Yeah.
Again, we're making growth from beginning to end of the year, which is great, that's the goal, but we also wanna improve our system, and I don't see that happening. So, okay, let's go on to the math data. One of the things I love about our math curriculum is that our partnership with them isn't just, they sell us a product and good luck with it. They come and meet with us regularly, they meet with us three times a year, they bring data to us to look at, and they analyze their own data trends and help us to know what it's saying to us, and how to, what, how to address our instruction with that. So this is fall, sorry, I got the fall on the bottom, fall to winter for all K8. This is by percentages. So again, green is, they break it into five levels instead of just three, but these combined are kind of like the other graphs. So we had an overall increase of nine percent in our proficiency, which may not sound like a lot, but that's almost 700 students. So, sometimes percentages look good, and sometimes they don't, numbers of, so that's why this is up here. So you can see, you know, we've got, this is our number of students down at the lower levels, this is how many moved up in our proficiency level. So again, pretty solid growth from beginning to middle of the year. And now this breaks it down by schools, so you can see the, from here, I'm sorry, from here to here, this shows you the overall increase for each school in levels four and five, which is the on-grade level. And this shows you numbers of students, so that you can see what that percentage really talks about. And then it does the same thing for our middle school level, percentages of increase from fall to winter, fall to winter. And then numbers of students at each of those grade levels. And then essentially, I have the same thing for you by grade level. But I won't spend a lot of time on this, but we'll make sure you get the slides so you can go in. So this shows you each school's grade level growth. So that's kindergarten. Now, when you notice kindergarten, there's no red, because there's no two grade levels below in kinder. First grade. And you can see the increase in level four and five, or grade level proficiency. So you've got some really good growth in, but it's, it's not consistent necessarily across every grade level, but it's pretty good growth. That's third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. And even the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I wanna show you this, these next two graphs, this is what I was talking about earlier, the typical growth versus the stretch growth. Typical means they're, they're gonna achieve what you would expect in a year's time. So this was about midway through when we did this testing, so this is the percentage of students that were at least halfway to their typical goal by then, so, you know, a large number of our, kind of interesting this little dip. And I don't know, I wanna do some studying on that to figure out what that dip means, why, why is it so, seem, why does it seem so hard for our fourth and fifth graders compared to the other grades? And then this is the stretch. What's amazing about this, again, high end here, high over here, these are the kiddos that are gonna close whatever gap they have in two years' time. And what I love about Curriculum Associates, they come and they bring this data to us, and they help us identify those students, so that we can keep eyes on those kids and focus intensely on them, because if we can get them to stretch growth twice, they're at grade level now. So, if they were actually low. But this is my favorite part. I'm not sure how familiar you are with a quadrant graph, but on this axis here, the X, of the Y axis, it shows growth. So the higher up here you are, the more growth you had, and this is the median line right here. On this Y axis here, this is the performance level you have, proficiency levels, and your median is right here on this line. So you can see our schools are kind of clustered right where, you know, median growth, median, oh, sorry, median growth, median performance, we're kind of clustered right there. This was last year's winter data. And now, if you kind of keep your eye right there, as we switch to the next graph, you can see that is shifting, and it's shifting in this direction, which is what you want, a higher growth and a higher performance level. So.
Good job, Kuna Middle School synergy.
Yeah, yes. They're killing it. This is good news for me, because this says that what we are doing is moving the system. It's, as long as we continue to see this movement over the next few years, then what we're doing is working. So, that's kind of the difference between where we're at in reading and where we're at in math. Reading, we're having good growth from beginning to end of the year, but we're not really moving the system much. In math, now we're moving the system as well. So, that was an exciting thing to see. What questions do you have?
I don't have any to do this.
So high performance, low growth, is that like they already were doing well?
Yeah.
Okay, just to make sure.
Yes.
And then.
High performance, low growth are students that, they don't really need a teacher. I shouldn't say it that way, but.
Yeah.
They're gonna perform well no matter how good or bad the instruction is.
And then the low performance, low growth, they need, they need.
They're not growing and they're not performing where they should be. This is the quadrant, part of the quadrant you don't wanna be in. If you just kind of draw a diagonal line here in the middle here, that's kind of that progression of, of, of moving the system in the right direction.
So how do we help them move?
What's that?
How do we help them move?
Good question. Again, with Curriculum Associates, they're helping us to focus on the right, all kids are the right kids, but they're helping us to focus on the kids that haven't historically moved very well, so that we can give them the right interventions, so that they can move.
I think we need to ask some questions about what Kuna Middle School's doing, Center GND Creek and Hubbard, we need to see kind of what they're doing.
Yes, we do.
And see what we need to do.
And this is new, because, because they're a separate group now, I'm curious to see what they're doing too, I don't know much about that one yet.
I think they get more one-on-one help also, because it's synergy.
Could be, yeah. But definitely, we gotta find out what's going, and I know, I know a lot of what's going on here, and also here. I mean, these schools right here, and that's part of that PLC work we've been doing, is we really want people, we want our teams to work together, to look at data and use it. It doesn't need to be me going to them and saying, here's your data, what are you gonna do? They should be excited, look at this data, and if I'm teaching at Reed, I'm gonna go to Indian Creek and say, what did you guys do? How did you get so much more movement than we did? We moved, but let's, how did you move more than us?
I was gonna say, I went to Kuna Middle School, they have like an actual war room, kind of like.
They have big data wall.
Yeah, I was really impressed with, I call it the war room.
Yes.
The data wall, and I was just really impressed with what I, I saw, and Michael was with it when we went there, it was very impressive.
And a lot of schools have some form of that. Like at Reed, they don't have a room, so we have a digital data wall, they, it's not as effective though, because it have now, up and visible is a.
It was amazing.
It's a culture building thing.
It was amazing.
It sets that standard.
Does Fremont have something like that?
Is what?
Does Fremont have something like that?
I haven't seen that in Fremont's, do you guys have a big data wall?
Uh, it should, our, we've got a digital one with the teams.
Yeah. So, that's the data I wanted to share with you tonight, uh, thank you for the good questions though, too. I will come next month, like I said, with secondary data, it'll be the shortened interim comprehensive assessments, the CICAs. So it'll be like, like the shorter version of the istats. So I'll have language arts and math data for you for both of those. And then we'll talk about that too, so.
All right, sounds good, thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Reno is here, I think he's next, right?
He is.
I jumped ahead, sorry.
We're gonna talk about graduation.
Yep. Chairman Johnson, board members, welcome to graduation rate. So, wanna keep big figures that we are judged on as our graduation rates. So you can see, we have a ten-year dataset here, and it really shows the effects of the pandemic last year.
No kidding.
Because here's, here's the pandemic, four years, one, two, three, four, eighty-two. So it's gonna take a full system to come out, because our current fourth, our current fifth graders are COVID kindergartners. So how's that gonna affect as we come on? But, but yeah, so ninety percent has been our, our total goal. So you can see, we, we reached it pre-pandemic, and then it just altered, and we're on the way back up.
Robbie, what's the state rate?
Good question.
Before you graduate, I'm coming up, sorry.
So the state, this is a state graph, so the state set a goal, like eighty-six, ninety, ninety-two, ninety, ninety-five. The state goal's ninety-five percent. Well, they came back, well, the state actual has been this across the state. So, this year, the state board reset goals. So, the goal for 2023 was eighty-eight point eight, this is the new goal for last year, this current, very much only eighty, thirty, forty-five, and then eighty-six. By 2029 is the expected state goal, to get the state average up there. Well, yeah.
Well, I was just in your leadership meeting that you had, and you talked about attendance, and you were wondering how that would affect our graduation rate, so have you examined that at all? Like, how is attendance affecting this?
Yeah, we're still analyzing, because it's, it's, with the semester ending, and that's where we can really dig deep and do that. So if you, if you put us against the state actual and the state goal, you can see we're already, we're, we're where we should be according to the state goal. Of course, that's not good enough for us, because if you look at, you know, eighty-six percent, that is fourteen percent of our kids, and we have four hundred and twenty-five graduates averaged for the next four years, that's, you know, fifty kids that are not gonna graduate. And that's, we put it like that, like what Mr. Gipper did, the numbers. You know, so that's still, yeah, that's a great, that's an eighty-six or ninety's great, but when you put in numbers of kids, that's still not, not good. So comparison to the state, so, we'll see, uh, because the state has not come out, we couldn't get the state number, they didn't have that published yet. But then we also have to track, we're tracking our five-year cohort. So the kids that do not crack, so when you enter high schools of freshman, you're expected to graduate in four years. Well, we're judging all those kids, so if we got six hundred kids start, and they, they have moved to another school, or if they drop out, we're accountable for that. If they move to another school, that school then becomes accountable for it, but they drop out, that counts against us as we go. But then there's some kids that don't graduate on time, and so those kids who come after summer grads or the next year, this is where that comes in. And this is really promising, you know, right here. And this is really promising, you know, right here, the ninety-two percent of our five-year cohort kids get that.
But GEDs don't count towards that, right?
Correct, GED counts, doesn't, counts against us.
An initial point, graduates don't count on this.
Correct, this is not initial point.
Any questions? And this is one of the ventures on our strategic plan that we, that's partly, but I mean, high school wants that anyway. But that is part of our strategic plan is to monitor our graduation rate.
So you'll have these, that twenty-two, twenty-three number this year?
Yes. I think it's already up to down. Okay, we'll, we'll make sure it's in the slide, but it's, it's there, it's in the nineties, so.
Okay, thank you, Robbie.
Can we also link this because it wasn't on the agenda?
All right, other reports, we'll start off with a board theme. So kind of, just kind of wanted you guys to see. One of the things I wanted to do this year as chairman of the board is to kind of have a board theme. And our board theme is supportive learning environment. What we can do as a board to support the learning environment in our district. So we have four pillars in our strategic plan. And the strategic plan is twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven. And we, we decided to do pillars. So we have a student learning pillar and we have little subcategories after that, under that, safe schools pillar, organizational strength pillar, and strong relationships pillar. So that's what the school district as a whole has. So the reason why I wanted to come up with a board theme this year was after doing some, going to different schools and seeing some needs. I think it's important that we focus the board's work and board meeting on priorities for the year. I think that if we had a theme, it provides a roadmap to align resources to support our parents, students, teachers, and community. And I think it sets a vision of how the board can help the district prepare for the future. Kind of interesting because this kind of ties along with what we were talking about earlier in our in-service type thing. So the how. So I was just looking at priority areas supportive that support learning environment. One of the things is, as we've kind of been through, I think all of us, as we went out on our trips and just talking together as a board, we know that there's some behavior issues in our district. And some of the things that we, I, I think that I'm hoping the board would like to do is concentrate on elementary, provide staff professional development around behaviors in the classroom, whatever we can do as a board to help our administrators, our teachers, our staff, and the behavior issues that they're seeing, especially at the elementary level. Then also, I think another how to help support would be special services. Educating about and supporting programs such as TLC, SLC, GT, ER, ERR, EL, et cetera, some of those special services. And just educating ourselves about those programs and what we can do to help. Then parents. And I think one of the things that we talked about and come up with is providing parent universities policy engagement transparency. As a board, I think it's important that we give our parents some in-service, some things to talk about, to educate, to make sure we're doing good policy engagement and bringing them in. And also, I think it's important as a board that we stay transparent to our parents. Then student wellbeing, some of the things I think that we can do in supporting learning environment is instructional time. How can we increase instructional time for our teachers? And what are some things we can do to, in prevention in student wellbeing? And what kind of coping skills can we give some of our students? And then I think it's really important also in supporting our learning environment, and we've talked about this tonight, is the data. Educating the board on how our schools and students are doing to support, improve, and celebrate them. So that's kind of the how of what I'd like to see us as a board focus on for this coming year. And then the next one. So how we would do this is by monitoring. So in our board meetings, we, we would encourage reports on these priority areas. We want to review data. We want to monitor those budgets and resources to help with the supportive learning environment for the year. And then, of course, I think we want to celebrate the successes that we will be seeing in our district. And anybody have any questions? I know I sent this out to the board earlier, a couple of weeks ago. Do you guys have any questions? I, I just thought it'd be kind of nice to have a theme and kind of give us a roadmap to see the different things that we can do as a board to help our district.
Yeah, I think my question is, what do we do, like, what's the next step? So like, I think some, some data on what the behavior issues are, what kinds of things they're seeing, what, you know, like maybe gathering some of that information from elementary schools.
I think, yeah, I think that's right on. I think that that would be what we would need to do and follow up on.
And then also, you know, we're, we're working on the phone policy, where the parent universities are in progress, I think all those things are.
Yep. So I just.
And then the policy and all those things are kind of in progress.
I think it really gives us the why, the vision, and the mission. Can I say that, what we learned tonight? And it winds up with a strategic plan that our school district has also. So, yeah, and those are, that's exactly what I think we'd be looking at. Those are things that we need to look at, kind of gives us a, a place to start. Any other questions? Anything from the administrators or? Well, good, we'll just move right on then. Okay.
Thanks, Ken.
Yeah. Update from parent university, and I know trustee Lo, you were able to go to that. Would you like to give us a small report on how that went with the parents and what went on?
Sure, I mean, just from my perspective, I know there was one previous to this one, right? And so this is the second one, but I was only able to attend this one and I thought it was well done. I enjoyed the idea of having the panel of people to talk. And then it was really, it was really great to be able to have, there were QR codes on the tables that if you thought of questions throughout the evening, you could submit those questions and they were, they were responded to that evening. So it was kind of a good feedback in a real-time situation. I thought there was good interaction. I think, you know, there were, there's lots of strong feelings about all these issues going on. But I thought that everyone was pretty respectful in being able to present what their thoughts and feelings were from all the sides. And at least that was my.
So what was the overall questions that the parents had? Like, what was the most, if you could say, that we're, that the community is looking at?
I think that the community, many of the parents there were parents of children within the TLC and, and ERR type programs. But then there were some parents there that were, that were there not, that were not, that were just like general education. I don't know what you call it, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, so they were communicating with one another and trying to balance the needs of all students. And I think that that's the main concern that was happening.
So good conversation.
So I thought, I think good conversation to be able to understand how things are from other perspectives and kind of some of the needs that need to be met on for, for different types of students within the program or within the school system. I think the main frustration that I think came out from some of the parents was just that there's a lot of disruption in the classroom from behaviors. And, and I don't think that that's all from, from students that are in, you know, TLC or ERR. That's behaviors like we've talked about throughout the, throughout the school system. And, and what came out was really it's, it's elementary schools. That's the middle school and high school students. I mean, at least what was represented to me at this university, parent university was that it's really just was the disruptions are in elementary school. And so larger class sizes are a big problem, that all, that came out for sure. We need to, I think that's an issue that needs focus. But yeah, that's kind of a, I don't have the solutions, but those were, those conversations were certainly good. And I think it kind of helped people feel like they had a forum for coming and, and handling a frustration and answering, getting their questions answered, so.
Well, thank, a big thank you to the administration for putting that together and Kevin and.
I felt bad, I was sick that night.
Oh, you were?
Yes. That wasn't too good for you, so.
Allison, thank you.
She did a great job.
And Kelly.
Yeah, Kelly Schamberg.
Thank you to them for putting that together.
Panel in that.
Yeah.
And do we have another one already scheduled?
That's what I was gonna.
We don't have it scheduled yet, but we're, that's one of my next projects to get that next one going. Do you have feedback for us, what we would like it to be on? If you have ideas, I'd love to hear them, but we can bring some ideas to you, too, if you'd like.
Yeah, bring us some ideas, let me think on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Last meeting, we talked about some committees, but I would like to report on some board liaisons and kind of have talked to these board members. And so when I say liaisons, it's not a committee, a, a group of people. But it's the board members being kind of liaison to that group and being able to report back to us if something is coming up and kind of give us more information. So with the city and mitigation and whatever goes on with the city, J D Grant and Michael Thornton have stepped up and said they would kind of like to, to work with that and to work with them, to also work with Tim and Jason and, and working with some of that so that we can see how that looks. Then our policy, Hillary loves policy, so I like you, girl.
I don't think I.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
Can I talk about our, oh, we're trying to be unified with the city and development and all that. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as that goes. I mean, we've been working with them for a long time and I feel like we have swung the pendulum a little bit to help education in our community. I feel like the city has, compared to other cities, the city has helped us quite a bit. And the tone has changed a little bit. But, I mean, with Danielle not doing that job anymore, I think Tim is mainly responsible for that now, is that right? Tim and Jason?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So just so that we're talking about that, I mean, we've, we're asking for some mitigation fees when there's developers coming. So I know in the past, they had the pre-planning meeting, the planning and zoning meeting, the city council meetings, a lot of meetings for you guys to go to. I, I mean, is that consistent? The pre-planning meeting and the planning zoning meeting, do they have it every month or do they have it twice?
Every week.
They have it every week?
So, and we, we go, because we're mainly tied in with obviously Kuna and Meridian are the two main ones that we have, and like, we just got an application that is in our boundaries that's from Ada County. And so that one process is through, we'll, you know, as those meetings start, we'll have to attend, you know, with Ada County. But I've been to meetings in Caldwell or Canyon County and it's so, it's just, it's, it's all over. But Kuna and Meridian are the most too consistent. Kuna has a meeting every Tuesday, alternating city council, one week, planning zoning. Meridian has a meeting every Tuesday and Thursday. City council and planning zoning, going back forth. And so we just have to watch those agendas. And if there are developments that are in our boundaries, then, you know, we have to go make a presence at, at those meetings, so.
We appreciate the efforts that you guys have made. I know Robbie's made a lot of those meetings as well. One thing that I know that we talked about before is just making sure, I mean, every time, correct me if anyone has any different opinion about this, but whenever there's a development that's in our school district, it is going to feed into one, it's going to feed into one school that's at capacity. Either high school, elementary, or elementary or middle school. So our, I mean, our thought process or our ask when we go to the developers is like, if you develop, this is gonna, this is gonna affect us and we need some help. And so that's what we're asking them to do. We, we do have kind of a platform for those mitigation fees that we can ask for. I think, I just hope we don't sell ourselves short with, with some of these big companies that come out here and ask for a little bit more. I mean, it doesn't ever hurt to ask. But I just want to make sure as a board, we're all on that same page, that that's what, that's the process that we're taking and that's what we want to have happen.
I, I think that is. And I think it's good that you're on it because you've been on it, or you understand the history of when we started this. And I think with Michael, too, it will help with that. I know Tim, I talked with Tim a little bit about the difference between Kuna and Meridian, which is something I think is a, something that you guys will have to probably pick up on.
Meridian's not quite, they haven't swung the pendulum.
No, so.
They're not going.
They fight back. But we're not going to quit either.
Yeah, so that, I, I think that's something that you need to probably work on, too. But definitely, we've been here and, and we know that we need something. We're growing and there's not a lot of money coming in, so.
And I know one thing we talked about is land, as far as like how many acres is okay to say yes and how many acres is okay to say no. We're making sure that we stick with that, too.
I think we said we want to see every request and take it individually, right? Based on like the needs, yeah.
And where it's at.
And where it's at.
Because I know they're trying to do the apartment complex.
And where it feeds into.
Because we don't have infrastructure for that anyway.
I, I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
There's the apartment complex that they're trying to do and that's a no.
I think it's important we know where our schools are at, too, and what it feeds into in that number. And, and I'm, I'm happy that we've got two board members that will help take some time to, to look into that more.
So if you, if you guys need any help or please reach out to me. I'd love to help as much as I can.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
We will, we will do that.
We have been stewing on a few questions that we could probably use your guidance and some, you know.
Where we want to go as a board.
Yeah, I think just helping clarify things sometimes for the community, it can be confusing. So.
But making sure that we always have a letter in the packet, too, because sometimes we don't.
Yeah.
That's been an issue. And if we don't have a letter, then the city is confused as to why we're, we don't have a letter in the packet.
I know I have, I, we have some patrons that sometimes like get after me because, so we'll go to a developer and we'll say, hey, we, we can't support this development. And then they give us the mitigation fees per unit that we've asked. And we're like, okay, we can support this development. So, I mean, it, we're caught between a rock and a hard.
That's the wishy-washy place.
That's what I was gonna ask, because that's what I hear the most, too. Like, what is, how do we handle that? How are you handling that?
I think, I think we all have to, I mean, we can't completely stop growth and development. That hurts us in our, our local economy a little bit, too. I mean, we have to have a little bit of growth to sustain our economy. And then you get back to some legal ramifications, too, about if you completely stop growth and development, then people that are selling their properties do have a leg standing up as far as that goes as well. So, so I, I, I like the way that we're doing this. I know when people don't see the big picture, that they don't agree with it. But, I mean, I don't, I don't want to see a big boom and all, and that unless they're helping the schools and the education.
So do you think it's just, it's not that we don't support the growth and development, it's that we, we are asking for them to partner. So it's not that we are a no and then we get money and then we're a yes. It's just that we are, we're asking for their support, you know, as part of the community. It's not that we're changing our mind, it's just that we know we can't stop the growth and development based on private property rights and all sorts of laws. But we're asking them to be a partner. So it's not really a flip-flop is what I kind of feel like.
Well, I had a community, community member come to me with that same scenario. And I had to think about it for a while. But if I'm on the school board, who am I representing? I'm representing the school and the kids. And I get it that there's some, you know, kind of a fine line somewhere sometimes. But if that's what I'm representing, representing, then that's who I want to make sure gets a piece. And I guess that's one way I looked at it. Because I could understand what they were saying. It is a fine line between, well, we're granting this one, but we're not granting this one or whatever. But if I'm a member of the school board, I'm here to represent kids and what we can do to help kids in our community. And I guess that's the way I look at it, J D.
Yeah, I like what trustee Lo said, it's, it's a partnership.
It's a partnership.
If they're going to partnership and help us with the education and the kids in our community, then we can, you know, partner with them as well.
Yeah.
Well, and we do, I mean, it really benefits, we, we represent the kids and the students, but we also represent those that are paying taxes. And it is beneficial really for taxpayers and those that we're going to go ask money, you know, of later for bonds.
It helps us.
It helps offset. So, so it's really beneficial to all the people that we're representing.
Yeah, definitely. Well, thank you, thank you for those words. And then Hillary has agreed to kind of be our liaison with Brian on any policy that we have. So if there are community members who have quite. So if there are community members who have questions or whatever, of course, they can go to any of us, but Hillary would kind of be the person who would kinda follow through with that. So, any questions about that?
I just wanted to say that since this, we switched from having like a policy meeting, I still feel like we're getting a lot of good community involvement for the policy, I don't know if you feel like that, Brian, but.
Yeah, I share.
Lots of emails, I think we've all received and, and I think we're, people are, are seeing those policies that we're reviewing and, and engaging with us on it. They have a really good opportunity to do that and so I feel like it actually has been beneficial to open it up to more than just a few people.
Yeah, I think the biggest feedback, I think chairman Nixon gave it to me as well, and you've said it multiple times, can we just link everything? We're like, we do P D S, but it's time for us probably to get out of the eighties and, and look at some kind of program.
Be nice to link some of those policies with.
Yeah, I think we should look at that seriously.
Cause I think people would be able to navigate our, our policies so much easier.
Yeah.
I agree.
I know it'd be a lot less frustrating for people looking for something or trying to find, you know, what the laws are compared to the policy and.
Imagine the time that Dan has spent with her family and staff. Back in our policy.
She's a yes vote.
All right, let's move right along. CFO Brad Stedman is gonna talk to us about levy timing and a date to the board.
Okay, so this is a quick informational slide that I'll share with you. So we, we thought it would be a great idea to remind ourselves on the timing of levy funds and when they're coming in and when we need to plan for making sure we don't have an interruption in our levy funds, supplemental levies and for planning for capital planning committee, having bond levy money as well. So the first one is the emergency levy that happened last year where it was certified and we're having funds that get us through calendar year 2025 along with the general fund. Now for calendar year 26 and 27, that's where the supplemental levy comes in that was voted for last November and then it'll be certified this year. So that, Jason wants to know, it'll cover us now through the end of 2027 calendar year. Now, to ensure we don't have a break, we need to plan for the next supplemental levy, which you, Jason and team would want to, we'd want to push for that by the end of next calendar year or beginning of 2027 at the latest so that it gets certified in 27 and then you would have no break in funding. At the end of calendar 27, you would then have another two years of calendar 28 and 29. Now it takes through 29 so that you don't have a break. Now, you, you may notice there's calendar, there's a timing difference between when you get the funds as the calendar year versus the school year, when, when you budget for fiscal year is a little bit earlier. So that timing difference, we plan for that by getting through that through the, using the general fund in the interim, just like we're doing this year. And then it catches up in, in the end, so we would budget the expenses ahead and then you have the funds come in. And on, at the very end, on the back end, you're, you're whole again. But the key there would be not to do what we've done the last few years where you have a break in funding and then you, you dip more into the general fund. Luckily, we had a sufficient general fund. Now, if you do that too many times, then you don't have a general fund to get you through and that's why it's important to not have a break in the supplemental funding and also the unknown of state and federal funding in the future. And then the last one, bond levy vote, we would want to have even prior to the next supplemental levy vote, if we wanted to have facilities, because you wouldn't start getting that money to start building for two, for two years from now. And then it takes time to build and you wouldn't be able to enjoy the new facilities or updated facilities until five years from now. So if you delay that one year, then you're now in 2031. And we know that that failed a couple of years ago, so that's already put us a couple of years behind and we were just talking about growth and needing to have those. So it's just a reminder on that as we plan to make sure that we've, we don't have a break in funding that puts us in trouble, that makes us, you know, need to let go of teachers or not have the funding for our facilities and, and then it helps with the capital planning committee. So this is informational only, so now at this point, capital planning committee just decides what to do going forward.
I did realize that our vote November of 2024, we don't get the money till January of 2026 and January of 2020, so.
And that's the difference too between the May and November vote, because the certification is in September and it delays you that much further on each of these.
I didn't realize that. Living large.
That's, yeah, that's the, that's the trade-off.
So many.
But that's why knowing this, we can plan ahead a little bit further to make sure we don't have gaps.
Well, it's only planning ahead, it's hopefully getting the people.
Yeah. But, yeah, and then every, the community can understand how important this is, so.
Well, I think it's just important always when we're talking about a levy, that everyone recognizes that a levy is for our operating expenses and it's for the curriculum and teachers and things like that, everything we're operating. And it's not for schools and that's something that I see pretty frequently mistaken, so I just wanna make sure that we say that all the time. And the bond is, would be for new facilities and improvements.
That'd be a broken record.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just think it shows how much we're underfunded because we have to keep going for levies.
Well, and that's the other thing to mention is that this is the system in place in our state for funding schools. And so this isn't the fault of Kuna or that we're overspending, it is the funding mechanism for schools.
Yeah.
For Idaho.
Yeah, it's been like that for a long time, it was only recently where we had a little break.
Yeah.
And now we need to get back to that.
Right.
That was the nice thing that COVID did for us, it gave us some monies that we didn't have, so. If you could say something nice about that.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
I guess where are we at on the bond, the capital planning?
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
So, capital planning committee, I talked with Kim Beckertal before she went on her wonderful cruise. And what we wanna do is we wanna make sure that people understand that we are right now in the process of putting together that committee so we can start as soon as possible. So we are looking for people that would like to serve on it and anybody that you know that would like to serve on it. Also, I know we're gonna need one or two board members on that, correct? On the capital planning.
I don't know, is there a policy?
Committee for the number or is it just? I think it's important that, I think it's important that we have at least one if not two.
Absolutely, yeah.
So, and so basically, we wanna make sure that anybody that wants to be a part of that planning need to talk with Jason and Allison. It, it's important because we as a school board need to know what the community wants and what they're thinking and taking a look at that. So we need to start that right now and so hopefully, I think next month, you're gonna be hopefully putting that together.
Yeah, I, I have the email ready to go, I just didn't wanna get ahead of this.
That's what I, that's what I wanna hear, so, yeah.
How many people do you want on that committee roughly?
You know, as many as we can get, honestly. I think the more feedback, the more voice we have, the better decision we're gonna make.
Like community members, I know when I was on it, like the mayor.
Yeah.
A councilman.
We have a pretty good list.
Of different people.
Allison put together a survey back in, I think, early August, asking for community members that were interested in serving. Obviously, you guys helped us make the decision to kinda shift the focus of that capital planning group to see if those folks wanted to help with the levy and we did that, so we still have that same list of, of people that expressed interest. We also have previous names that were on the capital planning that we did, what was that night? Finished in 2020, I think, 2019? Is it that long ago?
No, we had, we just had one not too long ago, one with the bond, before the bond that went down.
Seems like.
Yeah, maybe it was a couple of years ago.
Twenty-two, yeah.
It was right when David.
It's COVID years.
Yeah, I was gonna say a couple of years ago.
Can we, can we as board members, what if we all find at least one or two people?
I think that's great.
Ask if they'll be on that capital planning committee?
That would be amazing.
Yeah, I know, I, I sent him one.
I got one from you today.
Yeah, sent him one, I think that's a great idea. And then I just wanna open it up, anybody listening, anybody here, this is your time to step up and help our community, take a look at where we need to go and how we need to do that. So, I think it's important. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, do we have any patrons who have signed up to address the board tonight?
No.
All right, let's just move right on. All right, CFO Stedman, you're up again on the other day on appraisal for Street Tim. Thanks guys for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is another informational slide where no action is needed, but a few months ago, you approved to get an appraisal for the Fourth Street location, the gym and other buildings. And the company was able to give us an appraisal and they, they did two different approaches, a cost compared, or a cost replacement and a sales comparison approach, they recommended the latter, the sales comparison, they're both pretty similar if you round up and down, about 1.7 million. In here, if you wanted to get into a lot of details, a 63-page appraisal, but what they did was come up with a price per square foot and, and came up with a price. Now, again, this is informational, you, you use this at this point with the capital planning committee to decide, do we continue to use it for what we use it now? Do we make adjustments? Do we sell it and use the funds elsewhere for the district? That's, that's really the next steps. The, the next slide, I'll just show it very briefly, just shows how they came up with the, the 1.7 using the sales method. They just do simply what you always do in real estate, right? You compare with the comparables of the other commercial properties. They surveyed real estate professionals, what they thought it might be per square foot and they came up with, with the amount here. The, the actual value of the land is 600,000, that's within the total 1.7 million in either method. It's also within the cost approach. I won't go over it here, but if you wanted to, in the appendix, you could see how they came up with the, the cost replacement approach. And then one other piece of information is just right here, just saying, if you demolish all the buildings, wipe them out, what's the value of the land? Cause you would have to pay to, for the demolition costs, you'd only get about half a million being able to sell it at that point. So selling it as is would make more sense because it's a one point, it's worth 1.2 million more, leaving as is a 1.7. But now at this point, you just decide what's the value to, to the district? Is it, is better to keep it for what we use it for or should we sell it? And that's the next steps. So this is just informational only, just to give you an update on the appraisal. You can dig into the details in the appendix and the actual appraisal itself. Any questions?
Do we know how much we were leasing it out to Boys and Girls Club when they were in there?
Uh, Boys and Girls Club was not, was not paying.
They weren't, they weren't paying anything?
Partnership.
They paid for the custodian.
Okay.
So the lights already, that was.
They helped paint it, I think, didn't they?
They did, they did some upkeep outside, they did some upkeep inside, but they.
And have we had some interest in purchasing, any formal interest, like people saying?
She, she put the word.
Yeah, how do you define?
Well, I don't know, I just have heard about it and sent them your way, anywhere that I've heard, yeah.
We've given tours, we've talked to different people. Do we know, do you know, do we know how much like utilities cost? Just a monthly cost breakdown, what we have to pay to turn the lights on and.
Remember, we still use it as a warehouse, we still use it as office space.
Yeah.
We do some use rental, absolutely, it's a, so that we would have to, if we sold, we would have to find a solution for a warehouse, solution for storage, solution for.
Our sports renting and all.
Six to eight offices there are, yeah, we use it a little bit for rental, we use it for overflow.
Does the middle school still use the gym for practice at all?
Uh, they, with the decrease of C teens, we just, we don't use it as much. I know Indian Creek will use it as an auditorium a little bit. Ross hasn't come back to using it yet, but Indian Creek has returned to use it as an auditorium. And this is just one appraisal. You could also decide, just like a doctor, maybe you want a second opinion or there's supposedly a historical appraisal that the city really would like us to do. The city would really like to control who, who buys and who we sell to.
I think we.
Then they can buy it.
Yeah, they did, they offered to buy it.
It offered to take it.
Partnership again, that partnership.
We're partnering.
If, if somebody comes to rent it, like are we, cause I know there's like, there's a roller derby club in there, there's lacrosse, they have all that stuff.
Our, our soccer, soccer team is, uses it quite a bit for indoor stuff, our, our high school soccer team does, the lacrosse uses it, absolutely.
So it's being used as a gym then somewhat?
City uses it for like the down home country Christmas, there's another event they do in there.
The breakfast, whatever that is.
Oh, okay.
The prayer breakfast.
Well, they, they had that at the church this last time, instead of down there, so.
So like, how much are we charging like for the, these clubs that are coming in there right now? We probably shouldn't.
Like we do have a policy in place for charging, so we have.
Yeah, and it'll, and, and then I know that with, you've, you've had some suggestions, so it'll come back in May for some, some amendments to our, again, that, that's like, I feel like that's a pretty commonly updated. That, that gym is charged the same as we charge Crimson Point, same that we charge Reed now that has an actual, Kevin Gifford. Not Memorial for, we don't wanna say Memorial.
But it's not really covering much of the cost.
Yeah, we don't rent it the same as we do like the middle schools or high schools because you don't have the scoreboard, you don't have the speakers, you don't have the bleacher capacity like, but it's, it's charged the same as Crimson, Silver, Trail and Reed.
And then what's, how, do we know at all like what the future costs that are gonna be needed? Because like I noticed somewhere on here that it's not in great shape.
It needs, it needs a really good bathroom renovation if we truly, it probably should be sooner than later. And there really is no ba, I mean, there's just a one male and one female bathroom, but it's maybe two toilets each. So it's a really small bathroom capacity for, like if you were to truly have an event there of 100 people, the, the bathroom really needs some work. The HVAC got some work, the ceiling got some work.
And is all of that factored into what this sales appraisal is, like the future work that needs to be done? Like for someone also to take it over, like is it, they're gonna have to bring some stuff up to code, right?
Fire, sprinkler.
And so is that kinda factored in this sales?
Yeah, my question to him, that's what he hinted at, that it's included into it, yeah. But good financial analysis would be, what you're saying is what would it be to continue to maintain this? And if you sell it sooner and you get more out of it?
Yeah. That's what I'm kinda wondering is like, if we're headed down a road of like needing to put a lot of money into it, like what's the, what's the analysis, I guess? Yeah, but maybe the next step.
Was that number low to you guys or is that high, or about what you thought it would be?
I had no idea, to be honest with you.
I thought it was high.
It seems pretty high. It was how old it is and how much work it's gonna need for somebody.
I'm just trying to think of what a, what a potential buyer would use it for and, and what their like return on that purchase would be and what the investment will be to bring it to code. So that's why it seemed tied to me, but I, I mean, my opinion really is not educated, so I, I don't know.
I know we have, we have someone in the community right now that just took over the force club and they, they would like to rent it. And I, I don't know what that would look like. Can we maybe get some answers like how much it costs us?
To upkeep and run like utilities?
Just on a monthly basis, what, what is the cost to the district to just have it?
And then I guess also helpful to know like what a plan would be to relocate those things that are gonna, like do we have resources within the district to relocate that or not, you know?
Where would we put tech, where would we put the warehouse, where would we put storage?
Like maybe a good brainstorm when the mom and the kids don't have a place to practice.
Sure, that, with that one less gym, what would be our plan for?
I think, I think, I mean, my two cents is I think some type of rental option that covers the fees as long as we can still be able to have it from our three to five so that our kids can use it when we need it.
Right.
Okay. All right. Okay, any other questions or concerns or comments? All right, let's move on to new business. Uh, March regular meeting. Trustee Lowe will be able to attend our meeting March 11th. And so she is asking if we can move it to the first Tuesday, which is March 4, 2025. Did you wanna say anything else about?
Um, I may be able to join remotely, but I just thought if, if it was possible with everyone's schedule, I would just throw it out there to see if that would some, be something everyone can accommodate.
And I did talk with Phil and I, and he's willing, he can't come March 4th if we change it to that. He's got a conference, but he will come in April, so we don't have to worry about not having our second in service, so. I, I, I personally don't have a problem with it, I just don't know if it sets a precedent that, you know, I don't want everyone to think every time they can't come, that.
Sure.
Myself included, that hey, can we change? myself included, that hey, can we change the the date? That's my my only issue, but I personally don't have a problem with changing it. And I would love, I think you're an important piece and I'd like to have you here. So that that's my only concern. So, anybody else?
I don't have a problem with changing it.
Do I have a motion then?
I'd rather not. I can make the motion, but. I'll make a motion that we change the meeting from March eleventh to March fourth.
Okay, do I have a second?
No, second.
Okay. And in favor, um, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay. So that passes. All right, second reading of policy and for Superintendent Graves to go through that with us.
And just real fast, CFO seven didn't leave angry. His son gets his um.
His commission call. His mission call. I'm sure you can relate to that.
Yeah, he said we had to be down to eight and we said his part's done.
Yeah. We totally understand.
Yes.
Um, just remember when uh, policy from first reading secretary changes significantly, I bring it back so you guys get an opportunity. And I promise my nurses that I meet with won't do this every time. They got really excited and they felt like this part policy was too wordy, so they came back with significant changes. So that's why it's here. Um, they really just shortened it and I'm dead still. Um, they stole a lot of it from Valley View School District of how they shortened it and took some things out, but that's why I came back to first secretary.
Do I have any, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept um, policy nine ninety, Blackboard Passagens.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any um, discussion? All right, uh, Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
JD?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also. So, all right. And now we are on amending the following.
Yeah, so these are, there's, we group these policies into four different categories for you. Um, this is just first read. So there's two amendment ones and we just put the cell phone one at the bottom and we figured out we'll get the most discussed.
I just have, I just have one on six seventy-eight and it's just wording, um, like there's a change um, already from this to the in um, on number five, and so I figured it would be good to do that also on twelve and thirteen.
And I I had a, I had a statement um, to make it not a change.
On the same one.
On the same one, six seventy-eight, but just to make it more organized. If you take a look at um, some of the the numbers, they talk about religion and religion and then they add something else into it. Then they go back to religion. I'd like to see all of them kind of organized in the same. Uh, which is not a change, but just that organization, so it makes it easier for our patrons to to follow along.
I was slow with the pencil. You said this to the, um, what?
Well, so it changed it on on point five and then, but the same wording should be used on twelve and thirteen. From this to that, that district, and so this district.
Do you guys want this one to come back as a standalone second or you're make those changes for?
Well, I think if we're gonna combine a bunch of them, we should see it again.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if combining it.
She just said reorder.
Oh, reorder.
Reordering it. It's not combining anything, it would just be reordering it, so it's easier.
Put all the release time ones together.
Right, right. And why they're releasing, it's just kind of organize it a little bit better in the numbers.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I also, I had a question with policy five oh four, or five oh two, sorry.
Yeah, it's one of those, her number's different than our number, so there's two.
Yeah, so sorry. Um, so the student publication one, and I I kind of went over this with you. If you take a look at that, I don't know if someone can bring that up.
There's a portion where it tells you what what it can't, like what it can't have for a student material and then what it can't have for advertisement?
Right.
And um.
I'll let you explain it for me.
Jeremy Mason just ordered, why, there's some that are repeated, like obscene. Uh, your advertisement can't be obscene and your student article couldn't be obscene, but there's some that, it just seems like all of those um, stipulations should be, if you scroll down, should be used for both. So this list of what you can't do isn't exactly the same as the list on number three.
Number three.
So.
And then three has one that number two doesn't, which I'm like going, okay, what's the difference?
What student publications do we have?
Uh, we used to have student newspapers. Uh, right now, currently, none of our schools do anymore.
We do have an advertising policy too, right?
Right, that's.
They all have a yearbook, so the yearbook, there are advertisements in the yearbook. So this now, like if Kevin wanted to advertise for his um, painting company, he could, he couldn't do it if it was obscene. Better refrain.
Do your best.
Yeah.
But it's just kind of, that way you don't choose Kevin's painting company over Robbie's painting company and you've got a reason why, because of obscene. But we could, what, my suggestion was I'll take these, combine them with what is missing from one and I'll do the same and then I'll run it by our because right now student publications, not that it's a dinosaur, we do have yearbooks and at the high school, we do have some social media that's run by students. So we kind of said that's the new version of the student newspaper.
Well, yeah, and let's say middle school decides they want to do a newspaper sometime or whatever, then we have the policy to go with it.
Absolutely. But I I can easily, so we'll combine those, I'll run them by the principals and then I'll bring it back.
And and I like that idea. So I I think that'd be great. And then um, the other one was policy, hold on here with the principal, which one was the principal's?
Three oh eight.
Three oh eight, thank you. Thank you so much. Policy three oh eight. And there was one that I wanted you to take a look at and uh, change some wording. And I think I gave that to Brian.
You asked about the Charlotte Danielson training?
Um, no, it was, hold on.
I wrote it in my other notebook.
Uh, go back uh, uh, go back up. Sorry. It had to do, keep going up.
The second sentence in the first paragraph.
Thank you, so that I have to.
I don't know. I just, that one didn't read right to me. There's like, of their assigned school, management of their assigned school or something. But I'm not the language arts.
The second sentence of what?
Of the first paragraph.
Oh, the first sentence.
See where it's at.
Did not read right to me.
It suggested towards.
It says principals are the chief administrator at each school whose primary responsibility is to supervise the operation and management of their assigned school. Second sentence.
And what do you want to change about it?
Second line, starts on the same.
Yeah, it starts on the second line, principals, just, it didn't read right to me.
It should be of.
Of their assigned school, that's all.
And it says of their.
Why aren't you talking about?
No.
No way.
I think it looks good now. I can't find out where it was. I think it looks like it's been changed, so I'm happy with the way it is. So, on that end. And I think that was my only question, the changes.
Wow, amendments A, we'll put amendment B on the bar.
All right, do I have, is there any other?
Not on this section.
Anything else on this section that you'd like to take a look at? Do I have a motion to accept um, the first reading of I guess I can say it, two oh two, three oh eight, three ten, four oh seven point five, four ten, four seventy, five oh two, and six seventy.
I so move.
Okay. And is there any other discussion? Kirsty?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Uh, JD?
Aye.
Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm aye. Okay.
The next group is a group of removals?
I know, I think there's six.
Adopt a poll.
Adopt a poll.
Oh, I'm sorry, direct, adopt first.
I have a few things. Um, we have some feedback from the community and that I also agree with. In six thirty-nine point one, um, it's got a, the pupil personnel is defined but then never used within the policy. So I don't know if that was in intended um, to maybe replace some of the like where it says principal, school counselor, and does need, or if we just need to remove the pupil personnel?
It said counselors. It would be first, so this was a change that we made because it it called counselor and then counselor was listed as part of the as one of the many, like, so then we thought it was better as pupil personnel, but I think later it kept repeating counselors, so maybe we didn't replace wherever they said counselors should, because it it lumped social worker all in and we're like, ah, counselor isn't really a social worker.
So maybe we just need to replace all those designations with pupil personnel.
Thank you. So we we fixed one, but not fixed all. Would that be a reason? Because they refer to it as the school counselor, but they listed like four different jobs that, would that be it okay?
To switch it out?
So then just to, yeah.
Yeah, um, I did, under the exceptions, um, to disclosure to parents, it talks about um, a violation, it's it's except when there's a violation of professional code of ethics. And I wonder if we can um, refer to what those code of ethics would be, because it just kind of, like what code of ethics are we talking about?
It's kind of like an A, B, C, or like give a bolded list of like some examples?
Yeah, because I think it's just a little too open-ended for that exception to.
Just defining code of ethics.
Yeah, like what code of ethics are we talking about? So if there's a specific professional code of ethics that we can reference it there, or otherwise we can just list that out.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I don't know specifically what they're talking about when they say professional code of ethics.
It just makes it easier for parents reading it. They don't have to try to go.
Yeah, I I'm sure we have it somewhere, but it's not linked.
Yeah.
Or, um, and what that means. I mean, I agree.
Yeah.
Code of ethics, everyone has.
Yeah, so it'll be super easy to just bolt that out. Okay.
And then if everybody's ready to move on?
Yeah.
Okay. Six thirty-nine point three. Sorry, Brian, I can wait.
No, you're totally fine.
Okay. Um, six thirty-nine point three, it talks about um, a member of the school will always accompany um, a parent visiting a classroom, and I think it might be nicer to, like it's right there where it says will always accompany visitors. I think it could change to may, because I just think, like if a parent is a if they, if we've got a comfort level, if an administrator or something has a comfort level with a parent, then maybe they don't always need to just be sitting there with them. If they want to visit lots of classrooms, then maybe they don't need to be with them the entire time. Maybe they can come and introduce them in the class and then leave them at the, you know?
Yeah, the only thing I see, I don't play devil's advocate here, the only thing I see is if a teacher says a parent did this and there's not that third person in there, or if the parent says the teacher did this and there's not that third person in there. Um, that's the only thing I see that it would be nice to have, it doesn't have to be an administrator maybe, but just somebody to make sure that whatever is occurring is, there's a third person there to make sure that that's what's happening. That's the only reason I'm playing devil's advocate, that I would like to have it as is instead of.
I mean, there's probably a whole classroom of students as well, so I.
Yeah, they can't really count the students. And that has happened where there has been a parent in there and they said that something happened and it and the teacher said that didn't happen.
And then, I don't want to bring the kids into it, I guess, is the thing, just because you're gonna have kids say, yeah, no, yeah. I I just like the idea of having that parent, but that's just, I mean, um, I think it's a safety issue for everybody, including us as a school board.
Well, and I do think that the, this particular policy is as a result of some legislation that wanted to make it feel like parents were invited to the classroom and and in my opinion, this policy just doesn't do that. I don't think it fits the intent of the law. And so I thought that this would loosen that up just a little bit um, and leave it up to the administrator and their comfort level. Um, that's just my thought. Another part um, is in number four. Um, on the classroom visit procedures, let's see, maybe that's where it's at.
Once cleared by the background check? Is there something?
Um, I just feel like maybe there isn't a pre-meeting necessarily involved, or necessary. Because I think if a parent wants to visit a class, it may be just because they are curious about their student, or you know, what their student's learning about or or the environment of the classroom or for any reason, and I don't necessarily think that we need a pre-meeting to talk about. Maybe not necessarily only just a problem that they're coming for. So does the teacher need to have a meeting prior to? I think that that's also a barrier to, you know, opening the classroom to parents, and I think we need to try to do that.
Is that number, where are you?
This is number four.
One, once cleared by the background check, oh, pre-meet with parent, teacher, yeah. Read on, Kim. Speaker, come on in, Jim.
You can say pre-meet with parent or teacher.
Or just like a, an email to make sure that the teacher, the parent knows the expectations of the classroom, like it does, do we need a schedule? Like I think we're just making a visit to the classroom a big deal.
Yeah.
Where I think maybe it just shouldn't be such a big deal.
Well, I wish things were like it used to be, like people would just drop in and say, I'd like to go visit a classroom, but things have changed so much. Um, I, you know, the pre-meet is kind of nice just to set up so the teacher understands maybe what you're coming to look for. But I don't think that has to be in a meeting, that could be.
A good email or a phone call.
Yeah, email or a phone call. I I I don't think that's a problem.
I just like to see it simplified to an email or a phone call or something, another way.
Yeah, or if they want a meeting, I I mean, yeah.
Pre-meet via email or phone.
Yeah, or if they want to come in, I mean, it depends on the parent, if the teacher wants.
Pre-meet via phone call or email.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The administrator feels they need to do that.
Yeah.
Parents square.
Parents square.
Parents square, yeah.
Um, in number six, there's kind of some verbiage here that says can we also provide some tips about curious kids? I don't know, is that part, supposed to be part of the policy? Or is that somebody's questions that got added as policy? Like that's weird. My experience has been kids always want to ask me questions, especially when it's their friend's mom. I, that doesn't seem like policy going down, so I think we could probably delete that.
I, I don't need to talk about that. I mean, I think that they're just trying to set out as, uh, from the classroom, if you come in, you know. When teach, when parents come in, I don't care how many times I've taught, or administrators, it's disruptive and everybody goes you know, and then you have to, and then, well, we've been there as we've gone into the classrooms, what are they here for? How come you're here? What's going on? And I I don't think that's the whole purpose of why you're going. And so I think they're just trying to set that up so that you would understand that there may be some curious kids, but.
But I guess it shouldn't be a question if it's a policy, so I guess.
No.
Say what we're gonna do with them.
Yes, so, you know, we can provide tips of what it would look like maybe for parents going in.
And then again, number seven, I just feel like we don't necessarily need that second adult to support the visitor. I think expectations for the visitor should be made clear, like they're not to interrupt, you need to not interact, engage with the teacher or the students. They're there as a silent observer. And then we.
I I guess I don't under, I, to me, it's a safety issue, so my, and I'm playing devil's advocate, it's a safety issue as in like I want to make sure that whatever happens, happens, and that people don't feel like this happened and then then we get into more issues. Um, and I, who that person is, I don't think it has, yeah, just another staff member, just someone to be in there. And once they get in there, things are going fine, then I think that's okay.
But that's not what it says, though. They said it has to be there with them the entire time.
Well, and I believe administrative and staff already have enough stuff going on that they don't need to.
It feels like an additional parent or guy in and all.
Okay. It does, I don't see where it says they have to be in there the whole time.
Well, it says up above, and so this is just supporting up above. Or it says it will always accompany visitors.
Observations, you're sitting in the classroom and taking notes. I've done it before. An administrator did not sit with me and I sat in the classroom quietly and I just wrote down what I was observing. I didn't interact with anyone. I didn't talk to the teacher. I didn't interact with the kids. Like I just sat there and did what I was supposed to do and moved on. Like, parents should be trusted to do the observation and move on.
Well, and we're background checking them, we're having, we're we're setting up the expectations. I feel like that's.
And that's putting a lot on the staff and their matrix, have to observe when a parent wants to go into a classroom.
Do you want me to read feedback from the administrators?
I like to hear it. I I know as a teacher sometimes, I always liked to have. I like to hear it, I I know as a teacher sometimes, I always liked to have, I would just, it could be a safety issue.
I can come back with their feedback.
Yeah, I I don't have a problem, I'm, I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate to make sure that we don't find ourselves in an issue someday.
Well, when we have.
Well, they're following protocol, there's already protocol set up, the parent has already followed it. I mean, I did all the protocol, I followed it and it didn't, I was supposed to.
Yeah, I think when we, I think this, did we change this a couple of years ago?
Just recently, actually.
Yeah.
We've done some, and, and after a little bit of time and looking through it, I feel like it's, it doesn't really support what the intention of the code that was, or the legislature that was, or the legislative, what, whatever you call it. The poli- or the law that was put into place, yeah.
And we're bringing it, remember, this was the movement of trying to bring our procedures.
Yeah.
Into policy, that's, so we, there was no changes to this, it just went from the handbook basically to policy.
Policy.
That's why it's got, Tracy Lowe loves the point ones and the point twos and the point two, that's why it has a weird number.
Well, I guess I'm just curious why that would offend a parent if there was a third person in there.
I don't think it's offensive, I just think that it's, it is difficult, it makes it more difficult for scheduling, it makes it more difficult to make, to allow a parent to just be in there and observe. Kind of makes a big deal out of a parent being there, like they're being watched, where really a parent just wants to come in be a part of the classroom and I think we wanna have that feeling of, of an open invitation for.
Well, I I totally agree with that.
And it's not a feeling I think is happening.
Think you don't trust them in class.
Well, I guess.
It's cause it, it's cause it disrupts education, I mean, I don't, I don't think we need to have an open invitation for just anyone to go watch a classroom.
Oh no, you have to follow procedure.
But that's not what the legislature says in the Idaho code thirty three six zero zero one.
I, I guess what I'd like to hear is what the administrators, teachers feel about it and see what they think, um, that's my personal feeling.
Yeah, I can come back with that feedback, so it will leave it that, the suggestion.
Cause I, I, I'm not trying to be mean to the parent, I, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible, but I wanna keep them safe along with the teacher and to me, it's a safety issue, cause I understand what could possibly happen and what's happened in this.
And that's why the system of you guys having a first, second, third, we've got the time, I can totally bring that back and we can.
Yeah, and I guess I just feel like the overall feel of the policy should be in keeping with the Idaho code and then also just to make it feel like we aren't hiding anything and that we're being very transparent and not trying to keep parents out of the classroom.
Oh, I, I agree.
The main feel, and that's not the way it reads to me, so.
See, and to me, it reads like it's okay, I mean, I'm not asking parents not to go and be transparent, it's just part of the policy to go and make everybody safe, that's the way I look at it, but. I, I'd like to hear what they have to say. Okay, anything else on this policy? Did you have another one, Hillary?
Um, not on this section.
Okay. So. Um, do I have, so we're gonna take sixty nine point.
One and point three and I'll come back and those will be this.
We're just gonna take that one out.
Stand alone, second read part and I'll give you guys, so point four will go.
It might affect the point four based on what happens.
Change to me, okay.
Okay, so how do we wanna say this? Do we wanna wait and put it on?
I would make a motion that we make some revisions to this and bring it back for new business again at the next meeting.
First or second read?
First.
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 Stay at first, for both of them?
For six thirty nine point one, six thirty nine point three, and six thirty nine point four.
For all the, for all four. Okay.
Okay, so that is our motion.
Second.
Do I have a second? All right, we'll start with Kirsty, Michael.
Aye.
And Hillary?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, okay. And then remove of the following policies?
Again, it's super exciting for the removals.
I know, let's just go, do we have a motion?
We have a motion to remove two oh seven, four seventeen, four fifty three, four seventy one, four seventy two, four seventy three, four seventy seven, four seventy eight, and four eighty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All right, and thank you Kirsty.
Hillary?
Aye.
And JD?
Aye.
And Michael?
Aye.
And Kirsty?
Aye.
And I'm an aye also, all right. And now for the students of personal communication devices, policy five eighteen.
Everyone take notes. You're gonna wanna click on it.
Right.
And I think, um, Trustee Lowe, you had a concern?
Um, well, I have a few details, um. I guess I think that where it says el- under elementary schools, I think that, well, I guess I think that the, um, let's start with consequences and go backward, I guess, if we, if that's okay. Um, I think the consequences for the violations at the elementary, middle, and high school should be the same. I don't, I don't care for the, um, the word confiscation of the device in the, in elementary or middle and I think that, that we should use the same process of, of, um, what that, what it states in the high school as taking the student with the device to the front office, putting it in an envelope, you know, so that it's, so that there's no, um, I guess, question about who broke the screen on the phone or a loss of the phone or, or device or somebody lost my i- AirPods or whatever. I think it's just, is a protection for both. It seems like a, like what you see on the cops shows is a chain of evidence. And so I think that protects everyone, it protects the teacher from accusations, I think it is a good opportunity to just train the students from elementary to middle to high school in a uniform policy throughout their entire process.
I guess, my feelings on that is you're dealing with different, um, ages and, um, different ways to have that phone policy because there are different ages. Um, I don't think elementary kids are gonna understand, okay, today you put it in this little package and then next time mom picks it up or whatever. I think that it's important to give them more, um, freedom to do what's right for that elementary student and they know that process better. Um, kids aren't gonna, little, elementary kids aren't gonna understand, I, I put it in this folder or, or write it. The middle schools, when I've talked to both principals and some of the teachers, they do like the word confiscation, that's the word they've been using and that's the word that they, that kids are used to, um, and it's been working for them and there hasn't been as many issues, that's what I've heard when I, when I've asked them. And so they, they like that reading.
And I think that the parents that purchase the device and send it with their kid don't like that.
So what word would they like to say?
I think they'd like to not have a teacher take the phone and put it in their desk somewhere where it could be stolen and that they can put it in a safe place for them.
So, uh, what, what's occurring now, Brian, on that?
So what we did is we dropped what's in the handbook at the elementary, this is the language that's in the handbook in what was their practice, I, maybe Mr. Gifford can tell us, I don't know how long that's been the elementary.
Forever.
Procedure and since you guys have adopted it, no.
And so where do they put the device when they confiscate it?
It goes to the office.
Like a teacher at elementary school goes straight to the office with it?
No, to the. My experience typically is the teacher would hold on to it till the end of the day, you get the kid, take it home, the next time they would send it to the office, your parents come get it, but. It, it hasn't been a huge issue at elementary with cell phones, cause most of the time we just angle, put that in your backpack, that's where it's supposed to be.
And they do it.
Usually, most, unless, unless they get to fifth grade.
Unless you have, yeah.
But that's different than a confiscation, right? Like that's just having to put it in the backpack.
Well, I think it gives them freedom as teachers and principals to what's best for their school.
I mean, you could change it to putting it away in their backpack at the first confiscation.
Yeah, it may result in a confiscation, so like I guess they, that's up to the teacher.
And then middle school should be the same as high school, the teacher shouldn't be taking the device, the student should be escorted to the office and there it goes. And then prepares them for high school.
I could see, yeah, yeah.
Because the teacher will get blamed if something happens to him.
Is this your first year or second year?
Second.
Second year, no, so this was the wording in the handbook for the last two years.
And, and you guys are fine with that wording and it's been working well or do you feel like there's an issue?
Yeah, we don't. And we do send it directly to the office, it doesn't stay in. Teachers will call the safety aid or, um, teacher will send the student to the office with the phone and notify the office students on their way down with the phone.
So it sounds like they're already following that, so we might as well put it in the policy.
You can just reword it.
Yeah.
With, it's still the same as high school.
Well, and so then, while we're talking about the consequences, um, a parent feedback that I thought was valid, um, emailed about, you know, so the second and third offense is where the parents will be notified and have to pick up the device. So what that means is that it's, it's likely that a student will be sent home on a bus or walking or maybe at home without any way to communicate for, till their parents get home, if they're not able to come pick it up, so I mean, a concern about a safety issue was brought up there, like.
And I think that's very valid and I think that we can do some rewording in, in that, in that, um, let's say the child contacts the parent, parent says, I can't get there in time, then it's released to the student, I don't have a problem with that if we reword that in there. Um, same with the third, cause I agree that there's an issue if your kid's coming home and it doesn't have a phone and you need that phone. So I think we could add that.
Yeah, and, and so that's the same with the elementary one, like it says that they're notified that they have to pick it up in the front office at the elementary school, so I mean, that's just the way that kids tell their parents they're home, it's the way their parents track them and just because they used it in class, I don't know if we wanna open it up to a safety issue and them, you know, being at home and having an emergency and not being able to contact them at all or call nine one one or whatever needs to happen, so. So do we wanna say that parents don't have to pick it up, like?
No, I think you can do what she said and reword it, if a parent can't come, then the student can pick it up.
Then the student can pick it up, but there's a.
As long as the parent is notified.
Parent is notified and then knows it, that's, that's how I think.
I mean, if you've got a third or fourth offense, no, your, your parent needs to be notified.
Well, and I, when I've talked with the middle schools, one of the things they do if there's third or fourth is they check their phone in at the office and then they pick it up at the end of the day until it resets up and I, I like that idea and that's what they've been doing too.
So I wondered if we wanna get rid of the second offense and just go first.
Um.
Um, and then second, third, and only have three so that, because really the second offense just says that the only difference is that the parent has to pick it up instead of the student and if we just do the third offense where they go straight to a lunched detention for a second offense instead.
I like the fourth offense though.
Yeah, and they keep the fourth offense, yeah, but just like, maybe make it three offenses instead of.
The second?
This, instead of four, but get rid of the second one.
Um, let me think about that. The only thing that I can think of is when a parent has to come and pick up that phone, it does make a difference.
But they don't, if they can't make it, all they have to do is say they can't make it.
And that's true, but that, to me, that's an exception and not the rule, but maybe I'm looking at that wrong.
I feel like most parents can't get to school at two thirty to pick up their kid's phone.
Well, if the second one says that the student can be picked up.
Well, the second one is the parents required to pick it up, but we're saying that the parents are required to pick it up unless they say, I can't make it, then we go home with the student. How, Mr. Reno, what, what are your thoughts on that? Do you have any thoughts?
Well, it's just hard, cause like you said, it's the parents who are involved, well, yes, there are some parents who can't pick it up. There are some parents that are involved that will say, hey, yeah, keep the phone organized, it's been a costume lens. If the parents that, my, my mom may have the phone, I'm never gonna pick it up, we can just keep it. And those are kids that we'll deal with and so the policy, you know, we'll, we'll work on exceptions, you know, if it's truly ever to see, yes, we'll give the hell back for that.
Right, that's not our process.
Right, suggest, couldn't say parent guardians will be notified, can you scroll up to the top, cause I know.
I see, so the third offense says they have to serve a lunched detention.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And remember, the offenses are just broken out by high school. You guys had a wondering up here, couldn't it say that student, parent guardian will be notified and a plan to pick up the device will be created, that way Tim can call parent and he makes the plan, cause he calls me, I'm gonna say, you keep that phone, I'll come.
Are you talking about elementary or middle when you're saying?
Well, well, cause you guys were worried about the rules, but just the plan, cause.
Well, but the way the middle school is worded, it doesn't, that's not even the way he described it, so it could be the way he's describing it.
The middle school should be like the high school.
Like, and Tim said, like, it goes immediately up to the office, like that should be in the policy, so parents know, like, it's immediately escorted to the office.
Well, what the confiscation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because that's not even, and then, you know, then the second offense is, yes, it has to stay in the office, so it needs to be detailed, like, like the way they break it down at the middle school.
In the high school, you mean, the way they break it down?
Well, he, I mean, the way he's doing it is kind of like the high school, so I mean, it doesn't really matter, you can still word it the same.
Yeah, he's sending it to the office.
Cause he, Mr. Jensen said they're doing it exactly the same way. It goes in an envelope, it's escorted to the office, that's the same thing as the high school. Second offenses, it goes straight to the office, third offenses, they lock it in the office, so it should be exactly the way the process is.
I, I agree.
So, Mr. Jensen, if you feel that we're gonna do high school for middle school, you're okay with that?
Well, your process.
It's the same thing, you know, the process you're doing.
The order you're asking, Trustee.
So if we change, so we're gonna make the middle school be the same as the high school, is that something you're okay with? Since you've been using this for a while.
Cause it sounds like what you're doing is pretty cool, it's not, you're not just taking the phone and putting it on a student's, on a teacher's desk coming into the.
Right.
They're taking it to the office.
I, I feel like we would be taking a step back a little bit just cause everybody's used to the parents and we, very rarely do we have an incident, like I'm there most nights till five, five thirty and I tell parents, six. And I say, hey, I'll be here, I'll make, I'll set up a timeline, we've done that to have them come pick it up. What you end up with, um, and what, from our experience, and Mr. Reno was kinda saying it, was when you give it back to kids, they, your parent calls in and says, I can't make it, and they call in, again, the next day when the kid violates, oh, I can't make it, just give it to my kid. The next day, yeah, and it just becomes an ongoing, and so then it creates, you know, that issue for, and it's, it's not a bunch of kids, but it's enough kids that you're, you're doing that, so. Um, and it's a tracking thing when you go to like first offense, second offense, third offense. Like, you guys have got nineteen hundred kids, who's tracking the first offense, the second offense, the third offense? It's a tracking, cause most of the time that, you know, those phones get taken, um, no, most of the time, all the time, they get taken to the ladies in the office and so now we put that on them to track, okay, it's, it's Tim Jensen's first offense, his second offense, third offense, you know, we've only got five hundred and, you know, sixty kids, they've got.
Well, this process was suggested by the high school, so, yeah.
And, but the high school hasn't, hasn't been using a policy before and I, I'm speaking from experience of having had a policy for a couple of years that hasn't worked affected.
And that's my, and that's my fear is like, yeah, we put this in and it's not manageable, then we have to ask you to say, okay, how can we amend this to maybe fit? And so, so we're just trying this and so this was suggested and so, and so the hard part about putting in a policy is that it'll, we'll have to live it and then finally see what is the volume, because we've heard there's been success if you have clear expectations, there's been success with a lot of schools, cause they, you guys have huge success.
Well, and when we looked at our policy, we reached out to multiple other schools that were already, that already had a cell phone policy and this is actually just following what other schools and districts had in place and.
So am I hearing you say that you're okay with this and it's not broken, so you wanna keep it that way, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and I'm good with rewording things, I like what Mr. Grave was saying, you know, contact and make a plan, you know, have a plan with parents and stuff.
For elementary, middle?
It's not gonna be a hill we die on, I guess, I, we know from experience, the tracking side of it is, it becomes multiple, but then you, you get parents unfortunately that abuse the, well, I can't make it, just give it to my kid at the end of the day and that happens multiple times and.
I guess that looks like more of like what you just said, like we put it in envelopes or just maybe you write out like a three-step process that you do and then that's the policy, not necessarily changing what you do, just rewording it so that it matches what you do, right?
And, and I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay.
And really, I think if we remove like having so many offenses, like if we only make it three offenses and make it easy to track and then you don't have to, like by the third offense, really, they should, and, and you're saying you wanna reset it every quarter, like.
Awesome, I mean.
Well, but I like the third offense, cause you make them do detention, because if a parent, if a parent.
I think she's saying, take out the second offenses.
I think, take out the second offense, only have it go to three offenses, cause on the third offense, you're checking it in before school and you won't have the problem. I think take out the second offense, only have it go to three offenses, cause on the third offense, you're checking it in before school, and you won't have the problem. Like, you're, everyone's checking it in, you, you've lost the privilege then to have it throughout the day, and you have to pick it up at the end of the day.
But they also have to serve detention. So the second offense doesn't make them do that.
But I would like the second offense to do that.
I'd say, I don't care, I like all four, so it doesn't really bother me.
Okay. Um, and I, I'm fine with changing that and taking the second offense out, if that's okay with Mr. Reno and.
And I think that the.
And the teachers, cause they're the ones that are.
Yeah.
Upholding this, then I don't have a problem with that.
And I think the main concern of the, the feedback from parents is having kids go home without a phone, so you're arranging like a six P M. pickup, as long as their parents know they're not gonna have a phone when they leave school, and that plan is made ahead of time. Like, that seems like the, the concern is that they don't have any way to, nobody has a home phone anymore, they walk home. It's just a different world than we used to live in. People have an expectation of being able to communicate with their students.
And that's one of the things, having a parent score now is beautiful, because to be able to send them a direct message that, you know, they might be at work and can't answer their phone, but it pings a text to them that they see, you know, so we, that's just been a practice that we've started up here to make sure that communication gets made, you know, one way or another, in a way that a parent can get the information.
Okay, good discussion, but I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. Are we keeping elementary and middle the same, but putting in some verbiage that you had?
I wrote down in my notes, I'm gonna work with Tim on, on, maybe like a little bit more of the steps.
On the ver, for middle school?
Yes.
Okay.
And work with Robbie if he wants to change any of the steps.
At elementary?
The elementary one, we just don't.
We just keep it.
I don't know, we don't have that person to, to be.
Or what's, what's the verbiage?
I'm a little deviated.
I think it would just be nice if in the policy it said that a student won't be sent home without a way to communicate, without having first communicated with their parents. Like, then it can be on a case-by-case basis, but just so a parent doesn't believe their child has a phone, they can't contact them, they're stuck at work, they don't know that their phone has been taken away.
No, I agree with that.
I think, in that first paragraph somewhere, or maybe right at the end of it.
State something like that.
Something about, and they, these guys will help me with that statement.
I'm good with that, that's our standard practice anyway, and so what I think, I, I agree with you.
And most of the feedback, I think, that I heard and that I sent on was like, what happens if there's a catastrophe? Will our kids have a chance to have their phones? Yes, they will.
Well, some of the guys, they still have access.
Yeah, they'll just turn them on. That's, that's the main thing that, and I want people to understand that. Um, that's the main thing I heard back, and then also what Hillary said, like, um, I don't want my kid without a phone after school. If, especially if they're like, I'll call a latch key type kid, they wanna make sure they have that phone, and I totally agree with that.
Can stop getting in trouble.
Put your phone away. I don't think there's a lot of, I don't think there's a lot of elementary school kids that they're confiscating phones, I'll just be honest with you.
No, it's the high school.
It's mainly, uh, and I think the middle school has really worked it out, where they're not really having issues, they said.
We don't have that many, not compared to what we used to, I mean, we used to have, shoot, there'd be some days we'd have twenty or more of.
Yeah.
And now, maybe one or two a day, some, a lot of days, no.
And then, I, I'm fine with taking out that second offense and making the third the second and the fourth the third.
I, I agree with that. I think just reduce, it'll reduce tracking. The only difference between the first and second is that the parents have to pick it up, and so it just seems like.
So you're just gonna make the third the second?
Yeah, and then the fourth the third. And then just in it, like, one detail, under non-instructional time, P C D prohibitions for elementary schools, like, don't we need an and slash or in order to make sense?
You said non.
Where it's in pink right there, and slash or.
Oh, interesting.
Way to go, that's good grammar catch.
And or.
And then, I guess, one thing that I heard also, and it, if we could spell out that, um, substitute teachers will be, have this communicated, um, because what I'm hearing from both students and parents is that substitute teachers are heavily on their phones.
That's something we discussed all along.
We discussed it, so I think if that could be spelled out here and maybe put in whatever contract they sign, that'd be great.
Or even if they, yeah, when they come in to.
Our hiring orientation.
Yeah.
Orientation.
I make a motion that we, um, adopt that with the first reading, the policy five eighteen, and make those, um, changes and move on to.
The second.
The second policy, or the second reading, I mean.
So bring it back second read with.
With the changes.
Yes.
Second.
So we can talk more.
Okay, any more discussion? Moving along, Hillary.
Hi.
Uh, JD.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Kirsty.
Aye.
Aye for me. All right. We'll get you home, Michael. Let's take a look at the consent agenda.
Eventually.
We're gonna need you.
Um, do I have a motion?
I have a question. I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
On the trip request, it's, I, it's not necessarily super important for this particular approval, but I think it would be nice if they could include what they're attending or what they're doing.
I'm working on.
Yeah, I talked with Deanna about that.
And we're trying to get all of the questions answered, so.
My understanding of this, this is what parents were right, when I talked with her about that, if we had more of an idea where they're going. And then also, there were some corrections that needed to be made. There were four chaperones and three stated, so, um.
And then also, there's two different forms that are being used, is there a standard?
One of them is, uh, go ahead and tell.
Like, I said, we're trying to get everything put together, it's been a process.
Are people still using the old form and then not?
No, if that old form is completely gone, then I would like it back, but.
I would like it back, too, but.
What's the difference?
This is the form.
It's gone.
So whatever they're using, that was the.
I know.
It just, it just says they're going some, to Florida.
To Florida.
I don't know where they're going, what, why are they doing that?
That's exactly what I said to her, it'd be nice that they had more.
That would taste fresh. Going for three days, I mean. Alligators.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And, all in favor, Kirsty?
Hi.
Michael.
Aye.
JD.
Aye.
And Hillary.
Aye.
An aye for me. All right, we are on the Good of the Order, and I just wanted to let you know, Down the Hill, thank you. Down the Hill is February seventeen through the eighteen. And then we're having our third annual college and career fair, February twenty-sixth, and where is that located at? High school, we didn't know.
Oh, it's gymnasium now.
It's a gym.
Oh, wow, has it gotten too big for the commons?
They were in gym last year.
So just wanted to make sure we understood that, and then April eighth will be our part two
For a new job.
To our in-service that we're getting for our literacy training. And then the Good of the Order, I hope Kim Beckdahl's having a great time on her, her ship, and, um, Michael, good luck on your vacation with the Good of the Order, and you know with that, will adjourn, so.
Let them.
I'm ready.
She says.
Second, we're all in favor, and moving right along. How's that?